Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first regularly scheduled meeting in, where are we now, November? It's a pleasure for all of y'all to be here today. We are very fortunate today to have a pastor here to do the invocation, and I say that because he is my pastor. It's Pastor Dan Jones from the Trippercross Cowboy Church here in Granbury on Highway 4. And I also want to recognize that we have two other distinguished members of the clergy here. We have Pamela Lott, who is a person that has started the Marathon Bible Reading in how many states I know, Alabama, Arizona, here in Granbury, that's nationally known. And she's brought with her her helper, as well known to everybody here, Pastor Mike McMahon. So we are very fortunate today. We have some real good blessings going on here today. So thank y'all for coming on the deal. And now I would like to ask Pastor Dan Jones to come up and give us a good invocation this morning. Thank you.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you give us. We know that all good things come from you. And Lord, we know that we live in a great place in Granbury, Texas, in Hood County, Texas. We thank you for that, Father. We thank you for these who give of their time, of their lives, to stand before us, to make decisions, to lead us, to do the work that has to be done. Lord, we pray today for unity as this meeting goes forward, and not just this one, Lord, but every part of the business of this county. We pray for peace. We pray for wisdom. Lord, we lift up our leaders, that you would give them that wisdom, that you would give them direction, that you'd put on their hearts the things that you would like to see done in Hood County, Texas, for the good of the people. But Lord, let us always remember that we're here, most of all, first and foremost, to serve you. So, Lord, we ask that you would give us the ability to do that. We thank you for your grace and your mercy through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. And we ask, Lord, that you would be with each and every one of us through this meeting and beyond, that we would remember that we're here to serve you. We ask it in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas land, and the country of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank y'all very much. That was, we could start off on the right foot this morning, I think that's for sure. There are no special presentation and no service awards this morning, and since this is the first regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court meeting, we have Citizens' Comments at Large. And today, we have seven speakers for a maximum of 30 minutes. So if you divide seven into 30, you come up with roughly 4.3 minutes. And so each speaker will be given 4.3 minutes to speak on any topic that you want. And with a, we have the public participation forms that these seven individuals have filled out. Now, if you want to speak on any agenda item, again, you have to fill out a public participation form and turn it into Sheriff Deeds. Sheriff Deeds will give it to Ms. Lang, and Ms. Lang will number them and hand it up here to the bench. And you will be given 30 minutes per agenda item, and that is based on the number of speakers we have as to how long you will be able to speak. So if you get six people, six members, you will get five minutes apiece, and a maximum of five minutes. So with that, please, if you're going to speak on any agenda item, please fill out the public participation form. So the person that filled out the first public participation form is Renee Tau. I saw Ms. Tau here at 7:30. She's got to have something important to say. She was here at 7:30.
Good morning, Judge. Can I pull that down? Okay. Good morning, Judge Massengill and Commissioners. My name is Renee Tau. My father always taught us hard work, honesty, and integrity are virtues that would get us through life along with our faith and our trust in God. Our liberties and freedoms as citizens of our great country are something else that I hold dear as well. One of those liberties is our right to vote. But right now, citizens everywhere are questioning the legality and validity of our votes. Did they count as they were intended or at all? This is not just a one-party issue. We should all care whether our votes were legal or did they count. A packet of information was provided to each of you on October the 26th concerning our election equipment being legitimately certified for all elections from 2016 through 2020 using the ESNS equipment and the recently purchased Hart Inner Civic Systems. Per the 2002 HAVA Act by law, our voting equipment must be certified by the EAC, Election Assistance Commission, by an accredited VSTL Voting Systems Test Laboratory every two years, with the state of Texas utilizing SLI compliance. The SLI accreditation actually expired before the 2020 general election on January the 10th, 2020. But due to COVID, someone made a decision on December the 22nd, 2020 to extend the SLI accreditation through to January the 10th, 2021. Documents show that the SLI compliance wasn't even created or requested until January the 16th, 2021. So how do you sign a document before requesting the creation? There was no executive order or law passed to accommodate this decision. Our Texas voting laws state that an exam and recertification must take place after any modification to the voting system. The Secretary of State's records show the ESNS system was last certified on April the 4th, 2014. So I can only assume that there were absolutely no patches or modifications made to our system anytime from 2014 through the 2020 general elections. The Hart Inner Civic System, which has been utilized for all the 2021 elections, has a certification for Hart Verity Voting 2.4. But there is no certificate of conformance on record from the Secretary of State's office for 2.4.2, which is the program that Hood County signed a contract for on February the 9th, 2021. Again, as stated previously, all modifications per the Texas Secretary of State's office. Texas Election Code requires all voting systems to be approved by the Secretary of State before they may be used in any election. The voting system vendor must submit an application to certify new voting systems and to certify modified voting systems. My question today is if the ESNS and Hart systems were not legally certified, would this make all elections for Hood County void for any and all elections from 2016, 18, 20, and 21? I pray that someone on this court or within our judicial system will address these issues and find the fortitude to do what's constitutionally right for all the citizens of Hood County so that we can know that our votes legitimately counted. Thank you.
Okay, the second speaker is Steve Biggers.
It's good to be here. It's not going to surprise anybody in this room that I want to speak about Agenda Item Number 11. I want to get a kind of a pre-game show with that. If you guys would listen, I would appreciate it so very much. Everybody knows how I feel about this. I don't think the county or any government agency has a right to tell some homeowners how to spend their money. So, so let's look at some of the documentation within the state that regulates this. So Health and Code, Safety Code Title 5, Chapter 366 on Sewage Disposal Systems, 366.001, Number 5, Allow Individual Owners of a Disposal System to Install and Repair Their System. Homeowners can work on them. Also within that documentation, 366-0515, Maintenance Contracts and Performance Bonds, Except As Provided in Subsection G, and Subsection G states, "The owner of a single-family residence shall maintain the system or through a maintenance contract." That's an option. That is the Health and Safety Code. The TAC Code, Texas Administration Code, once again, Title 30, Part 1, Chapter 285 on Sewage Facilities, On-Site Sewage Facilities, 285.7, Homeowners Who Maintain Their Own Systems Are Exempt From Contract Requirements As Provided in Subsection D4. After the initial two-year service of a new installation, new home, or if you have to replace, homeowners can do this without any contract whatsoever. Contract Submittals Unless the Homeowner Maintains the System as Expected of this subsection. Exemptions to Maintenance Contracts At the End of the Two-Year Essential Program Is a Single Family Person Can Maintain Their System. The homeowner of a residence elects to maintain their system, they don't even have to report. They don't even have to have training. That's TAC. Okay. The TCEQ, the Environmental People, once again, two-year requirement, new system, replaced system. And then after that, it says, "Maintenance Can Be Performed by the Homeowners of the System." This is the governing agency that wants to protect our environment here in the state. They're saying homeowners can do it. So how does it come about to this? Well, the TAC, the TCEQ recognizes the governing agency, which is our county, being able to do that. So let's look and see where you guys are a little closer to home. I know where Commissioner Andrews is. We've spoke about this. He's put it on the agenda today. I know where Commissioner Eagle is. We spoke about this a couple of years ago, and he put it on the agenda. Commissioner Wilson, back in 2020, before the election, we had a meet and greet the candidates, and we spoke particularly with my personal question, and I asked you about it, and you felt like with homeowners being trained, they should be able to maintain their system. And as you know, I've done this for three years, and my place is not a swamp. My place is not a sewage cesspool, as they want to say. Sure, there's problems out there, but those are people that are going to break the rules no matter what. So Commissioner Cotton, you were a stakeholder on this Watershed Protections Act, that plan that Ms. Victoria likes to refer to, and all through that is trying to derive the quality of the lake and what's affecting that. And basically, the executive summary was that, that you were a stakeholder and signed off on, get the homeowners trained. Homeowners that are trained are much better to take care of their property than what just a normal homeowner is. So apparently, you were in favor of that. So Judge, I've gone back and reviewed a lot of videos from your speaking, and multiple times, you have said, "I am for smaller government. I am for less intrusive government." This is intrusive government. This is an intrusive rule that just pertains to a few people, few homeowners in the county, not everybody. So I will have more to speak on this, a little bit more background information to come. Thanks.
Okay. Next, Dr. Victoria Calder.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks again for the chance to speak here. When we first were putting forward the opportunity for us to speak to you, somebody, a city official actually, said, "Why are you bothering with that? The Commissioners still view themselves as the guys that drive around looking for potholes." And I'm pleased to say that that is so not true. Having been privileged to meet with each of you a bit individually, I think, I know that every one of you are dedicated public servants and willing to listen and willing to consider our points of view. What I do ask is that you surprise us. And by that, I mean, I'm not psychic. I don't think anybody is here, but I would bet all of us, I know I can predict with 99% accuracy how every one of you will vote every time. And it's based, unfortunately, I feel, on friendships, alliances, political considerations, sometimes, at least things other than what your constituents might want. So I implore you to keep your thumb on the pulse of what you're here for, and that is to represent not grievances, friendships, alliances, or politics, but what your constituents want. What I really want to focus on today is to repeat what I presented at City Council because it's important. Sometimes the tail wags the dog with the 10,000 represented by City Council making decisions for the 60,000 in Hood County. And certainly, nothing more important than the wastewater plant proposal captures that. During the recent election campaigns, we heard a lot of political spin. It reminds me of the story of a Texas politician who ran for office decades ago. His father had been hung as a horse thief, and he figured his opponent would use that against him. So when his opponent did, in fact, at a debate, yell out, "Tell us again how your daddy died," this politician was ready with his spin. He said, "My father died at a public ceremony when the platform on which he was standing collapsed." And so that kind of political spin is what I was reminded of during this recent campaign. Some during the campaign claimed this wastewater project has been planned for five years. That's kind of hard to do when the land that is required for the proposed project wasn't even forced annexed until June of 2019. And the intent to apply was put forward in November. Now, my math's not good, but that's not five years, not four, not three. I even heard one candidate campaigning for reelection state that there's no point in looking into alternatives. He claimed the TCEQ hearing will be concluded and a permit issued within six months. In fact, the decision for, or more likely, against a permit will come around this time in 2022, if you understand the process. And when I hear that only a handful of people are opposed to this project, the truth is this wastewater project has the largest opposition of any in the history of TCEQ with over 400 people, households against it. Typically, they get four or five comments. They consider 30 a lot, and most of the time, they get, what was the number that they received for the West Knox Ranch project here in Hood County? Zero. An indisputable fact is that the city does not have a permit to construct the sewer plant. A number of significant issues were deemed relevant and substantial when our contested case hearing was granted. Bottom line, the city would have a permit, and all the opposition in the world would not amount to a hill of beans if there were no major, significant problems with this proposed facility, as determined by TCEQ experts. We pray that you'll support an effort to find a facility that we can all support and be proud of. And rather than buy into the spin that there's no permit because of this opposition, consider that there's no permit due to the reason for the opposition. It's because it's not the right thing to do. Less than 2,000 feet from Oakwoods, the gateway to the city, upstream from the city's drinking water, within a mile of hundreds of established homes, businesses, likely to trigger a golden algae fish kill through that route. And a sewer plant that's truly east will very much be needed in the near future. So why wait for yet another infrastructure crisis? Build it with today's dollars, not tomorrow's dollars, away from established homes so people have the freedom of choice to live near it. Freedom that everyone knew the Watershed Plant was granted, and that would be denied to the hundreds of citizens who will be adversely affected by the current project, including many seniors and veterans who fought for that freedom. We ask that you work with the city and harness old-school values to simply do the right thing, not because we can drag this out, but because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Dana Ruth Wilson.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Dana Ruth Meyer Wilson. I was conceived, born, and raised here, and I just turned 70. Thank you, Jesus. I am so proud of this home, Granbury, Texas, Hood County, that I call my home. And I'm just asking for each citizen in this wonderful county that I love so much, for us all, to use the five-letter word, T-H-I-N-K. Let's think about our county, our people, and let's just do the right thing. Let's try to be a friend to everyone. I know there is so much uneasiness going on in this county, and I would just so love for everyone just to work together for the entire county. We are growing. When I was born here, we were such a small county, and everybody knew everybody, and we all worked together. I saw my parents, my grandparents, everyone worked together for this small town, for this small county. And I believe we need to fall back and pay attention to what we say, what we say about each other, and let's just all work together. We are wasting so much time, money, and good effort for the entire county of Hood. We are growing at a vast amount. The traffic is horrendous, but I still love my little county. And I'm just asking for each citizen in this county to please speak kindly, and let's all work together. This county is not going to do anything but grow, and we must approach it in a positive manner, and let's all just be kind and listen to one another about our concerns and just make it better and better. And I love y'all, and I appreciate all you do for our county. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Daniel Peters.
Commissioners, whoa, 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 back again. What do we got? This will be the third Elections Administrator we're going to have to hire in two years? Three years? Just like we had to do the same for library administrators. People talk a lot right now about the integrity of our election system, and I find that hilarious because the people who have messed with the integrity of our elections in this county, it isn't Antifa, it isn't Joe Biden, it isn't whatever system you think was manufactured or handled in Spain. It is this Commissioner right here, Dave Eagle, and County Clerk Lang. You two have consistently run people out of this county again and again and again. And we have to keep hiring people, and somehow, somehow, I don't know how y'all do it, to be honest, those of you who aren't engaged in a project of municipal deconstruction. I don't know how you are going to go to the people who come to this county and say, "We can work with you. We're going to make it better here. We're going to protect elections here." Who's going to believe that? I wouldn't. We were the lead, I know, to be fair, this is probably a bit of an overlap, but I hate CNN too, y'all, and I hate most of MSNBC as well. And we were the lead story on both of those last week. Because of this now, third, we're the second Elections Administrator, we're going to have to hire a third one. Every time we pop up in the news, it is not because of how great this county is. It is not because of our wine festival. It is not because of the vibrant and wonderful downtown. It's because of stuff like this. It's because of, to be very blunt about it, homophobia, institutionalized homophobia, as was the marriage issue license, as was the books from the library. I could go on. We could talk about white nationalism. That's a problem here, and everybody knows it, and no one wants to talk about it. We could talk about the fact that bombs were found at the racetrack. I have yet to see a public pronouncement on that. IEDs, everybody loves to talk about the troops, care about the troops. People know about the shredding of our soldiers because of IEDs. We have an MRAP in this community. I have yet to see a peep. Two news articles, that's it. If I'm wrong, please correct me after comments. If someone has made a public pronouncement, I would love to see it. I have talked to many of y'all individually. Some of you I will not go to, but those I have, I have been, and you're one of them, Commissioner Andrews, because it happened in our district that we live in, and people should know about that. Instead, we got people up here ranting about ballot numbering. Ballot numbering. Nowhere else has this problem. Nowhere else. Hood County has ballot numbering problems. Give me a break. I'm going to follow up with, I believe, Ms. or Mrs. Tau, whoever that was, because as many of y'all know, I do software, and I will follow up with the version numbers and the licensing issues and all of that. And I will submit something either to the Hood County News or here, next time there's Citizens' Comments, about that, because that stuff's important, but I think it's probably garbage, like so many of the other complaints, about this former administrator, the last administrator, and the librarians. I'm going to keep talking about this because it matters, because it isn't just a party thing. It isn't just an ideology thing. It is a freedom thing. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Donna Cole.
Good morning to each one of you. I'm speaking on godly leadership. There's three prayer chains that each one of you are on. City Council's on it, too. Our city and our county need to work together, not against each other. This should be a court that is for we, the people, not for personal gain or to have status, but to do what God wants us to do. Now, lady before me, she talked about doing what's right. Let's do what's godly. Let's do what God has put in each one of your hearts to do, because that's what counts. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Sam Hightower.
I'm out of my league here. I just have a complaint about the road we live on. It was accepted about four to five years ago, and now all the paperwork has disappeared, and nothing ever got done. And I just still wondering if do we need to resubmit all this to get it done and redo it, or where do we go from here? That's about all I know. But I've been told that all the paperwork we filled out and turned in has disappeared, and nothing ever got touched. And I was told by James Devers, it, oh, gosh, I can't, it's springtime, that they would fix it in the following October, and they would pave it within five years. And then, when October shows up, nothing's happening. I called him, and he said, "Well, we're not going to do your road, and if you don't like it, it won't ever get done." That happened probably two, three years ago. So I'm just kind of curious if there's anything we can do about it. That's all I've got to say, I guess.
Okay. We're not allowed to respond to you in this open Agenda forum here. Okay, so that's why.
I told you, I'm way out of my league here.
Okay. Well, thank you for your talk.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Okay. All right. Now, we go into the Consent Agenda, and I would like to say that I find nothing objectionable on the Consent Agenda, except that I would like to make one comment about one item on the Consent Agenda. But does any other Commissioner wish to pull anything from the Consent Agenda?
No, sir.
Nope? No one? All right, well, the comment that I wish to make is concerning under the Sheriff, E2, where it says, "Accept a donation to Hood County Animal Control from Vernum and Leanna Exley in the amount of $8,000." But I found out today from Sergeant Kelly McNabb that this $8,000 actually totals $21,000, that they have contributed, a father and a daughter, to the support of our furry animals and help this, our wonderful animal control department that is run exceptionally well. So I normally don't do this. There's a lot of generals people here in Hood County, and there is no donation that is too small, and all donations make a difference, and thank you all. But anytime you make a donation totaling $21,000, as long as I'm sitting on this bench, I'm going to give you public recognition. So Leanna is here today, sitting by here. Would you please stand up so that we can recognize you? Leanna, please. That's the beautiful part of this community here. That's really nice. So since there are no other comments or objections on this, do I hear an appropriate motion? do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
You're second.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Wilson. Since there's no other discussion on the thing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Now, we are under Roman numeral eight, business to be discussed. We got subdivisions, roads, and plats, and we have our illustrious road operator manager, Mr. Donald Lenny. Mr. Lenny.
Good morning, Judge Masagel, Commissioners. The first item that Road Ops has is it's a public hearing to discuss and consider the following proposed traffic regulations. It's to establish a no parking zone along the eastern right-of-way of East Port Ridgely Court in the Port Ridgely East Development.
Okay. At this point, we're gonna convene into a public hearing and let the record reflect that it is 9:32. Please continue.
Judge, Hood County has received a request from the HOA for the Port Ridgely East Development, and with Commissioner Wilson as well. He has, he's been on this. The email transfers back and forth. To kinda give you a little bit of history, back in 2011, in October, this same HOA had asked to do a no parking zone on the west side of this development. Same, same situation. Now they're asking for the east side of the development on the east right-of-way of this roadway. After looking at it and speaking with Commissioner Wilson, we, we see no reason why the court shouldn't approve of this.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments about the right-of-way at Port Ridgely Court? Okay, if not, we're gonna reconvene at 9:34, back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion regarding the Port Ridgely Court?
Yes, I move that we establish a no parking zone along the eastern right-of-way at East Port Ridgely Court in the Port Ridgely East Development.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to establish a no parking zone along the eastern right-of-way of East Port Ridgely Court, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Judge, the second item we have is a petition from the Comanche Cove HOA that was actually sent to Commissioner Cotton, and in turn, sent it to me. And we both went out and looked at these roads, and had found them to be within our standards. And these roads are Boot Trail Court from Corral Drive to the cul-de-sac of 550 feet. Centaurus Way from Woodmere Trail to Dorado Drive, 955 feet. Corona Drive from Ridgeview Trail to Creekview Drive, 1,040 feet. Corral Court from Corral Drive to the end of the pavement, of 325 feet. Elk Trail from Thicket Trail to Bobcat Trail, 1,125 feet. And Satellite Court from Corral Drive to the cul-de-sac, 240 feet. This equals to about approximately eight tenths of a mile in total. As I said, Commissioner Cotton and I had gone out and looked at these roadways, and Road Operations recommends accepting these roads into the county road system.
Judge, and Commissioners, I did go out with Director Lenny and took a look at the roads. They have been, by the association, oiled and chip sealed, which really does a lot for the county that we don't have to go in and do that. So these roads are in pretty good shape, what we see. And yeah, there's no doubt about that, that they have done the right thing to bring these things up to our standard, so we can accept them, so.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion to accept all six of these roadways in Comanche Cove Development into the county road system?
Judge, I'll make that motion to accept those following roads as identified, six of them, in our minutes to accept those into the county road system.
You're second.
Second.
Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the six stated roadways in the Comanche Cove Development into the county road system, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Lenny.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, and now we go into development. Mr. Clint Head.
Morning Judge, morning Commissioners. First item we have today is a public hearing, or we're gonna set a public hearing for replat at Hunterwood Edition, lots 15R1, 15R2, and Block 5, Precinct 2.
Okay.
We'd like to set the public hearing for the December 14th, 2021, Commissioners' Court.
What was that again, December what?
December 14th.
Okay.
Judge, I'll make the motion to set a public hearing of Hunterwood Edition, lots 15R-1 and 15R-2, Block 5, for a public hearing for December 14th.
Second. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing for December 14th, 2021, on said property, second by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, what else do you have, sir?
Next item we have is a public hearing for the replat to discuss and consider the replat of Arrowhead Shore, Section B, Lot 63R and 64R, and Block 1 and Precinct 1.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna convene into a public hearing. It is 9:37. And what can you tell us about this?
This replat will be taking three lots and subdividing them back into two lots. So be creating a 0.172 of an acre lot called 63R and a 0.172 acre of an acre lot called 64R. It's located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 1. It's served by Public Water and an onsite wastewater facility system. Staff has reviewed the replat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay, is there any public comment or public discussion? Commissioners? Okay, at this time, it is 9:39. We're gonna convene back into the Commissioners' Court. So do I hear a motion regarding Lots 63R and 64R?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Arrowhead Shore, Section B, Lots 63R and 64R, Block 1.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. We've got two seconds. Sorry, a motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to replat 63R and 64R in Arrowhead Shore, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay.
Next item, we have a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Walnut Creek, Lot 1R, Block 9, and Precinct 3.
Okay. We're gonna adjourn into another public hearing. It is now 9:40.
This replat is combining lots 1 through 4, Block 9. It'll be creating a 2.458 acres lot called Lot 1R, Block 9. This property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3. It's served by Public Water and an onsite sewage facility. Staff has reviewed this replat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, here at 9:41, we are journeying back into a Commissioners' Court. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the replat of Walnut Creek, Lot 1, Block 9, and Precinct 3.
Second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of Walnut Creek, as stated, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Brazos River Acres, Section B, lots 19R and 20R, and Block 9, and Precinct 2.
Okay, it is now 9:41. We are journeying into a public hearing. And tell us what you have this regard, Mr. Head.
This is a replat of lots 18 through 21, and Block 9 of Brazos River Acres. It'll be creating a 0.391 of an acre lot known as 19R and 0.516 of an acre lot known as Lot 20R. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 2, and is served by Public Water and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed the replat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat as presented.
Are there any comments from the public? Any questions? If not, we will reconvene back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the replat of Brazos River Acres, Section B, lots 19R and 20R, Block 9.
Second. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton, and second by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of the Brazos River Acres, Section B, lots 19R and 20R. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay.
We have another public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan of Rolled Stone Estates, Phases 1 and 2, and Precinct 1.
Okay, at 9:42, we are now convening back into a public hearing. What do you have for us here, Commissioner Head?
This property is located at 1900 Camber Road, Tolar, Texas. The gross site area for this concept plan is 288.66 acres of the W. Hickman Survey Abstract Number 216 and the J. Hibbin Survey Abstract Number 225. This concept plan proposes to create 59 single-family residential lots. The proposed concept plan is located in the Rural District and Precinct 1. It'll be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. The proposed concept plan proposes to construct 10,505 linear feet of public asphalt streets. I'd sent y'all an email yesterday, thinking they had reduced the variance to one variance, but actually, it's still two variances. It's just changed a little different than what was actually sent out with the backup. So I'll present that now. There's two variances associated with it. The variances are to Section 1, 6.4E, 3D, and Section 2, 6.4C, concerning streets longer than 600 feet ending in a cul-de-sac. The one for Gospel Road, it's changed a little bit. There's a... They've added turnarounds, and they're random spaced. The longest spacing will be roughly 1,200 feet, and the shortest spacing will turn around, between the turnaround and intersection will be roughly 1,000 feet. And I guess both variances will be together, because it's the same variance, really. And then there's, the second variance is the same variance for the same section for Spirit Court, which is approximately 1,258 linear feet, which is only 658, 658 feet over the 600 feet allowed by the regulations. Is there somebody here to speak on that?
Okay, yes, we do have Chuck Clark. Who's a, is Mr. Clark here? Okay.
Judge, members of the Commissioners' Court, my name is Chuck Stark. I'm with Barron Stark Engineers, and I'm the engineer surveyor for the applicant on this, Mr. Kevin Cobb, who is here today also. Well, the reason we wanted to come before you, we have a proposal on the table to, in the concept plan stage, to bring this single-family development here to Hood County. In laying out the subdivision, the goal is to do anywhere from three to five acres, even some go as long as, as large as 10 acres. Given the geometry of the property that we have to work with, it doesn't lend itself to having multiple streets, or else the lots get very small. They're down in the two-acre range. And that was not the desire of the developer. He wanted to go with something larger. That brought us to the fact that the layout that works with the acreage exceeds the maximum cul-de-sac length in your regulations. Thus, we have the two variance requests. I would point out that the geometric aspect of it, which I think you can see looking at the drawing, and also the fact, given the size of the lots, these are larger than what a more suburban-type subdivision of smaller lots would be. I understand the, that is a lot of the driving force behind the maximum cul-de-sac length, also the consideration for emergency vehicles and school buses and that type of thing to turn around. So we settled at somewhat around 1,000 feet, up to 1,200 feet, for the maximum distance between the ability to turn around. We've introduced, in essence, cul-de-sacs into Gospel Road, mid-block, three of them. They're at the quarter points of the road, roughly, but kinda line up with the lot lines, that would allow for this intermediate ability to turn around. Between these turnaround points, you can see there's maybe three lots on each side of the road, so six lots serviced by that segment of street. This seemed like a reasonable approach to providing for the health, safety, welfare aspect, but being able to keep the large lots that the developer wishes to put on the ground, as opposed to some smaller lots. With that said, we would very much like your consideration of our variance request. I'm here, I'm the preparer of this drawing. I can answer any of your questions on layout or other aspects of the development you might have.
I think it's pretty reasonable. I mean, you're talking about large, large lots. And again, you said between these, you're servicing three, three of those lots between your cul-de-sacs on there. I think that this is a good, a good example of what would be a reasonable variance request. And so I would be in favor of that.
Does this turn around, and that, and emergency vehicles?
Yes, sir. It's, it's a standard-sized cul-de-sac, 60-foot radius, and exactly, if it were a dead-end cul, you know, at the dead-end, then. It's exactly the same geometry.
It's actually gotta be the oversized cul-de-sac.
Can you speak?
It'll have to be the oversized cul-de-sac, because there's no fire hydrants available. It's the 60-foot radius with the 50-foot asphalt radius.
Has the fire marshal looked at this? Would he like to speak on it?
Judge, to answer your question, I do have them drawn in at the 60-foot radius, the oversize that Clinton just alluded to.
Fire Marshal Jeff Young, have you looked at these plans? Do you think your fire engines could turn around?
Well, so here, here's normally my concern when Clint and I talk about these long cul-de-sacs. Your average fire truck's gonna be nine feet wide. You put two of them in there, you're looking at 18 feet to be able to get one past it and turn around and come back. My concern with these long cul-de-sacs has always been, if at the beginning of the cul-de-sac, you have an emergency that takes place there, and you have fire operations going on, everybody inside that cul-de-sac is gonna sit and wait until we're done. That could be 40 minutes, it could be four hours, could be eight hours. So that's normally my concern with the narrow, really long cul-de-sacs. So if we could figure out a way that we can get two trucks through there and still be able to provide for traffic, I would-
How wide would the cul-de-sac have to be in order to accomplish what you just said, for two fire trucks to be next, and then a vehicle to pass?
Well, so it's really the width of the road that's gonna become the issue, not so much the cul-de-sac. I mean, the fire truck's about 32 feet, 32 to 34 feet long. So whatever it takes to get them in there and get them turned around. The other problem with developments that don't have hydrants or water sources on-site is we've gotta do a water shuttle, which means we've gotta drive an engine past the one that is being used as the primary. They've gotta be able to drive past that and drop their water or put their water into that other truck. So at minimum, you're looking at 18 feet, and that's if we're riding curb-to-curb. So that's normally my concern when Clint comes and talks to me about really long cul-de-sacs with no outlets, is if you, if you get people blocked in there and you don't have enough width for two engines, that it could create an issue.
Okay. Would you like to address what he's just said there, Mr. Head?
No, I mean, at first, they brought it in where it was just all, like 4,600 feet, and it was gonna just have one cul-de-sac at the end, and that was the variance. And then they broke it up into the smaller- And they broke it up into the smaller sections to where actually there was ways to turn around, so you broke it down. And there's, like he said, less lots in between those turnarounds. So I guess Mr. Stark would have to answer Jeff's concern.
Well, I don't think the number of cul-de-sacs changes that particular... I mean, you're still...
Doesn't change that scenario.
Right, yeah. You're still, you've still got the same width road out there, no matter the number of cul-de-sacs. I think that it's the fact that, you know, you're servicing three lots across that span would give you a little wiggle room on that where you're not, you know, you're not half-acre lots with houses right on top of each.
At the same time...
You said, three on each side?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it would be, yeah.
At the same time, if it went down there and it looped around and made a loop and didn't have a cul-de-sac at all, and you had a fire right there, those people inside that loop, which would be allowed by the regulations, would still be stuck there until they got done too, so.
Yeah, it's a...
Okay. Mr. Stark, you've heard all these...
Yes, sir.
...issues here. What is your response?
I can appreciate what the fire marshal said about if there were two trucks stacked up there. I agree, the road would be blocked for some period of time. I don't know that it's feasible to go up to a 36, 40-foot road. I don't think that's what you want for your ownership and maintenance. I guess the mitigating point, I would say, is this, is that with the size of these lots, I would anticipate, you know, that the homes are going to be set back quite a ways. I would hope that the driveways would be available for part of these activities. We do not want to... It is our preference not to have to put loops, roads in there, because that's just going to drive the lot size down much smaller than what we want to see. It's kind of unusual for this project. Generally, developers are pushing to get as much density as they can, and in this case, the applicant wants to go with something different. This is going to be kind of a horse-themed development, you know, equestrian, and we believe we need that kind of acreage. Given the density, I think, is the mitigating factor from y'all's perspective. You know, with an urban-type environment, you know, even the 600-foot cul-de-sacs would have much, you know, significantly more lots on it and all. One thing that we are open to is stubbing out a street to the far west if you felt that was a good thing, so that these roads could continue in the future. I mean, we could certainly, I think, work with something like that. I have no idea who owns the property to the west or what the potential for that ever developing is, but I know in many jurisdictions, that's one of the things they look at for us to do, is to provide streets so there's an interconnecting network over time as things develop.
What is your response to what Mr. Stark just said?
I think our regs actually encourage that, but we don't allow them to end in a dead-end, so it would have to have a temporary turnaround at the end of that if he stubbed it out to the west.
So based upon all this discussion, what is your recommendation? Do you allow the variances or not allow the variances?
Well, if he stubbed it out and had an intersection there, then we're measuring from that intersection to the cul-de-sac. So then you're kind of getting down the road. I mean, then the fire marshal, you're still, the fire marshal's issue is still going to be getting trucks by. Those people are still going to be in between there, so to, I mean, I think you're going to have an argument no matter which way. Staff has no objection to this due to the amount of lots that are in between those turnarounds.
Okay. Anybody have any further questions or comments or discussion?
My only comment is, you know, we've dealt with this before, and anytime we get into variances against our regulation, I fear we have some liability if something happens, just what the fire marshal says. So I don't see our county attorney here, but when we agree to variances, it means that we've got a regulation that the county set, and now we're asking the court to make a variance to that that goes against our regulation. Is that right?
But we already, we've granted one longer than this before. I just wanted to make that notable.
So we've kind of set a precedent?
Anybody have anything else? Okay. Well, that's adjourned. We're going to reconvene into the Commissioners' Court then, and it's now five minutes to 10, and we're back in Commissioners' Court. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion.
Variance first.
Do what?
Variance first.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the variance on the cul-de-sac link and length and approve the concept plan for Rolled Stone Estates, Phases 1 and 2.
Second.
Second.
A motion's been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the variance on the Rolled Stone Estates, Phases 1 and 2, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Now, we're down to my last public hearing.
Okay. All right. We're going to adjourn back into a public hearing at four minutes to 10.
It's a public hearing for the side development plan of Wolf Hollow Phase 0 Data Center. This side development plan proposes to create nine servers, I'm pretty sure that's what they are, they're on individual structures, to be used for cryptocurrency mining on the Wolf Hollow property located at 8787 Wolf Hollow Court. The property is located in the Road Court Order District and will not require water or sewer services. There is no subdividing of this property for this side development plan. The side development plan will be leasing a portion of the 195.193-acre property owned by Exelon.
Have you checked with legal on this to see if that would in any way...
Is Vanessa in here?
Oh, there it is.
Brian Vanessa can talk on that.
At least I recognize you today without your red wig. I didn't recognize you last...
Me and Matt had both read over the 2015 Tax Abatement Agreement between Hood County and Wolf Hollow, and there is a section, Section 11 Assignment. It specifically allows for assignment of the tax abatement agreement to a new owner or lessee, but it says of the facility, with the written consent of, of course, the Hood County Commissioners' Court. It also specifically states that consent to any assignment should not be unreasonably beheld, withheld by the Commissioners' Court. There were other couple of important caveats to making an assignment of the agreement to a new owner or lessee. First, the agreement clearly states that any assignment of the tax abatement agreement would need to be to a new owner or lessee, again, of the facility. This specific language is identifying the plant and its improvements. The language does not intend, from my reading anyway, to allow assignment of the tax abatement to any of the undevelopment land separately from the facility. It says, if you read it, I'm going to, just real quick, I'll just kind of read this to you. So under assignment, it says, "This agreement may be assigned to a new owner or lessee of the facility with the written consent of the Hood County Commissioners' Court, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. Any assignment shall provide that the assignee shall irrevocably and unconditionally assume all the duties and obligations of the assigner upon the same terms and conditions as set out in the agreement. Any assignment shall be to an entity that contemplates the same improvements or repairs to the property, except to the extent such improvement or repairs have been completed. No assignment shall be approved if the assigner or the assignee is indebted to the county for ad valorem taxes or other obligations." I mean, obviously, when it talks about to the extent of the same improvements or repairs, I mean, they've already built the plant. They had like, I think, a year to break ground, which they did. It was online by June of 2017, so that wouldn't be an issue. The problem is in the agreement, they talk about, you know, having so many employees. I think they're held to having like 17 employees, and they're just very specific things, and the facility cannot cease to produce. And if they give the tax abatement to somebody, they lease a part of the land out, that person won't have any control over what the plant or the facility is doing. So it seems to me that they'd almost have to have a separate tax abatement program for that particular...
I think what they're going to do is violate that agreement.
I, from the reading, I think that would. I just don't see, because under eligible property, when they're talking about the... Let's see, under the tax abatement agreement, they have their definitions, and it says eligible property. And it specifically says, "The value of buildings, structures, fixed machinery and equipment and site improvements necessary to the operation and administration of the plant." And then it says, "Not inventory supplies, land, or housing." So it kind of sets land out beside itself. I mean, it really doesn't address it. If you want my honest opinion, it doesn't address leasing it for something that's, doesn't have the same, what do you say, is not in the same business as, you know, producing electricity. It doesn't. Now, we did not get a copy of the addendums, and I've been trying to, in fact, I called the tax district to see if they had one. Now, Addendum B is the Hood County Abatement Program, and this agreement is under that. So if there's something in that Hood County Abatement Agreement for the program that would make a difference in this, it'd be nice to see that. But just as the tax, as this tax agreement reads, I don't see where it actually allows them to lease out a part and them to run a completely separate business from what that tax abatement agreement was written for. I don't see that.
Sounds to me like there needs to be some of the external research, that's a big tax base for Hood County, and there, Wolf Hollow will be expending a lot of electricity with this crypto mining.
Yes, I agree.
As opposed to producing.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to see how that would affect any tax benefit and see if we can get an answer or agreement to address that. I think I would be in favor of tabling this and allowing you to get that in.
The addendum?
Are we under time crunch on this?
You can conditionally approve it based on if it was legal under the agreement.
Would you say that again? Get to the mic so we can make sure this is down.
You can deny it or you can conditionally approve it contingent on if it was, if it doesn't, you know, do away with that agreement because of 30-day rule.
Interfere with or violate the agreement?
So if we get a copy of the Addendum B and there's something in the Hood County Abatement Program that allows it, and it looks legal on that basis, then is that what you're saying? Okay.
So then what you want is a motion and a resolution passed that conditionally approves this, subject to verification?
It'll have to be conditionally approved or denied.
Okay. One of the Commissioners got yours?
We're still in public hearing, I think.
Are we still in a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd love to, if this is a public hearing, I'd very much like to speak to this.
So this is something that I follow a little bit. I'm not going to claim to be an expert in any way whatsoever, and it gets into a lot of very difficult and interesting politics revolving around money, energy consumption, and taxes, now obviously, property. And I don't want to pretend to speak for most of this county, which doesn't believe anything like I believe. But, that being said, people should very seriously consider renting out a portion of your power plant to a cryptocurrency mining operation that is just going to suck power, one. Will absolutely be a target for ransomware. And I didn't hear anything in that whatsoever that sounded like it was going to bring serious benefit to the county. I mean, I would have to look at that more intensively, you know? I'm kind of, you know, I believe in the dollar, just to be perfectly clear here, insofar as we have a currency, but I do not trust cryptocurrencies. Cryptocurrencies are bad news. They're really bad news. And I see liberal cities whatsoever, or cities, or, you know, Ted Cruz is around doing it, I think, now at some point. It's a bad idea. This is just one man's opinion. I do reverse engineering. I ran, you know, elements of security for a state senate campaign here, which is basically just email on a website. It's nothing that crazy, but it's purpose-built hardware for this. This can't be reused. Like, the hardware they use for these things, the computations they perform, it's in the silicon. It's not software. So these are useless after you've run the operation. And the market itself is horrible. It's a Ponzi scheme, you know? You see, every single day, I see new coins minted that are just total scams. They're there to, you know, to bleed people. And so, again, I appreciate that the politics of money in this county are not something that I would expect really very many people to listen me on, but I didn't even know this was going to be a thing. This is the first time I'm hearing of it. I will absolutely be following up with it and talking with other people, and I hope that other people, you know, who have their own opinions on it, speak up as well. Thank you very much for the chance to speak.
I'd like to throw in on this and agree with Mr. Peters on this. I think that something that gets tax-abated needs to be of a general benefit to the county. And I don't see that this is, you know, find a piece of property that you're getting taxed and pay taxes and do the regular thing. Where's the benefit to the county for an abated piece of property that they're building this on?
If I could weigh in, you're going to find this amazing, but I absolutely agree with you on this. And I haven't even been able to find anybody that could explain what cryptocurrency is other than some sort of equation that you solve and you get a bonus out of the deal. Now, what the people want to use their property for is their business, except they got an abatement from us as Wolf Hollow, not an abatement from us as Wolf Hollow selling or transferring property to another entity. So perhaps, you know, we could prorate the abatement or change, they can change up the, you know, there may be some changes made where they can just cut loose from the, whatever venture they're trying to do, but if somebody in here knows what cryptocurrency is, please tell me.
You would like to speak on this? Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. My name's Julia Sonnen, and I work for Compute North, and I am one of the people that has made this application. And I just want to say a few things. Compute North is a hosting facility. We host cloud-based computers. Some of them are mining computers for cryptocurrency and other things in the future will be for AI and other type of serving. Technology is growing. Everybody uses cell phones, computers in their homes, their businesses, their hospitals. We're depending on it. And we do need more facilities that are data centers to host all of this cloud-based system. And in response to the gentleman that spoke about his concerns about cryptocurrency, it is legal. It is growing. It is used by many in the federal government. Many people invest. Many investors support it. So for him to be concerned about Ponzi scheme is, I think, far-fetched, especially since many people in the investment industry invest. There's many companies that mine, there's many individuals as well, and it is growing, and it's around the world, it's global. Technology is not always understood. You know, things change quickly. The internet wasn't understood when it was developed, and now everybody uses it. So, you know, we don't know what the future holds, but I guess I think I would hesitate on being negative about cryptocurrency before more research is done by, you know, every single person, if they're going to make an opinion on it. And I did want to say that when we look to choose locations to put our data center, we look for stranded energy, meaning energy that is developed but not used. And I think it's a waste of energy to have things flared. I think it's better, let's use that energy and produce cloud-based systems for it. And we chose this location because of the excess in energy. So to be concerned that we're going to be sucking all the energy and people won't have it, that's false. That's not true. Exelon would not do any type of business, I'm sure, with somebody who is going to use all their electricity and they wouldn't have it to supply what they were built for. So we're just going to be using extra electricity that is stranded. So we're just going to be using extra electricity that is stranded. And also, it will be bringing jobs to the county, so it will benefit the county. And, you know, I don't know if any of you invest in cryptocurrency, but you may in the future. You may right after this meeting go and research it and be like, yeah, this is something I'm going to do. But I, I'm sure you use internet and Google and, you know, Facebook and all these other data centers are growing all over the United States because it's needed. And that's part of what we'll be doing as well. Do you have any questions for me?
I do.
Oh, yes.
I'm asking as a citizen, not as an employee.
Yes.
Hit the mic, please.
Oh, sorry.
Last February, we had a huge freeze and a blackout. A lot of people in this county went without electricity. If you're there getting extra energy, who gets their energy first?
Thank you so much. That's an excellent question. Our data centers can be turned off. They, they will be turned off. If there is a freeze like happened, we will turn it off immediately, no harm done to our facility. And we will wait until there is no longer an emergency need for electricity. That's a guarantee. And we have also, you know, been requested, you know, to, you know, turn it off and then, you know, benefit when need be. And, and we've made sure that that is a possibility, and that that is definitely something we do and will do.
I guess my concern still is the abatement. What's it, what does it do to the abatement we have with Wolf Hollow? And do these people, Westwood, or whoever's doing it?
Compute North.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do they get part of the abatement? Are they out of it? Are they cut out of it? That's what we don't know. And I think our county attorney was looking into that and still looking for more information. So I'm kind of like the judge. I think we need some more looking into the abatement. I'm not here to discuss whether or not you're doing a legal operation, or whether cryptocurrencies are good or bad. And I don't think that's our, I don't think that's our job. But it is to look after the abatement that we have done with Wolf Hollow. Is it affected by letting this new company come in and use part of the property?
So if I may speak to that. Clint, the manager from the county, did mention that you might be asking about that, and I did refer that to Exelon. And I believe they did look into it. And as I think the county attorney said, there's nothing written about that specifically in there. It's kind of unclear. And I know they want to do more research. So, you know, we'd love to get an approval contingent on that abatement issue, if possible. And, you know, I haven't met with the economic development chairperson here in the county yet, but I did email them this morning to meet, because that is definitely a concern of ours. We want to, we, we value the relationships we have with landowners, with neighbors, with the county, with the officials. You know, we believe in integrity. We want to be upfront and honest with everything we do. We want to have a great relationship where we do business. And, you know, in fact, we've got a facility in Big Spring, Texas, and I'm going to be going down there tomorrow, actually, to visit this facility and take a tour. You know, and I'm sure you guys have heard of Amazon, Facebook, Google. I mean, their data centers are popping up everywhere, and it, it creates jobs. It creates infrastructure. You know, the supplies are purchased. You know, the local people are used for the construction. I mean, it definitely benefits the communities that we have data centers in.
Well, here's another first. No, it's not a first, but I agree with Mr. Cotton as well on his, on what he said, because, again, I agree, we're not here to debate whether or not to do the cryptocurrency, and with all due respect, you still didn't tell me what it is. And, you know, I think the abatement is the issue, and I think that, I'm really not inclined to even do a contingency until we get more information about, you know, what you're talking about as far as employees. My understanding is you put an equation into the computer and walk away and hope that it comes up with a solution in a few months. So that's the limited amount of knowledge that I have about it. So, anyway, that's my one cent.
Please step up to the mic.
I have a quick question. So, and this is just me as a citizen, too, asking this question. Is the company interested in being there if they don't get the tax abatement, if they don't qualify for it?
You know, since I hadn't addressed that with the economic development, that might be a possibility, and definitely something we could chat about.
One other chatting about is have it in writing that if we have another emergency and we need the electricity, that y'all will shut it off.
We definitely would do that, I believe, yes. Mm-hmm.
There's this, yes, all right. We have another speaker that would like to say something.
Should I stay up here in case?
Yes, yes, just stay up here in case. Okay.
Good morning. I think you guys know that I have an IT background, so I do understand cryptocurrency at a high level. I don't know that I could explain it in detail to Commissioner Eagle, but my question, I mean, we're all about growth and wanting to bring economic development to Hood County, but doing it on tax-abated property is the issue. And I think as a concerned citizen, that would be my objection to this, is, you know, find another spot that's somewhere else in Hood County, do your data center, and just not on tax-abated property. My other question on the having and writing the freeze, this cryptocurrency, millions of dollars are traded every day in cryptocurrency, and what impact is it going to be to your customers that are trading second by second when you shut it off? I mean, that, that seems like an unmitigated disaster, if you ask me, for your customers and for the county. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you, ma'am, for those concerns. Our customers definitely are our most important assets, and we would not harm them in any way. Would they're not trading cryptocurrency, it just, the calc, the computers are running and calculating. And so if you stop it, it just stops. And then when you start it, it starts calculating again, so there's no harm to our customers. We would never harm them. And then, Commissioner Eagle, I, I wish I was a cryptocurrency expert. I'm not. But I will say that it's a digital coin, and it, it produces digital coin, I should say, like Bitcoin, like Ethereum, like Dogecoin, and things are growing so rapidly, there's so many other things being invented that I'm not sure. I'm not a millennial. My, my children, my teenage, my college student children understand this probably better than I do. And I know my son is 21, and he's invested in Dogecoin on Robinhood himself. So it is, you know, a growing thing, and most people are familiar with it. So I wish I could explain exactly what it is to you in detail. I just know that it's computing software that, you know, runs 24 hours a day, 7 days a week unless we need to shut it off. And because it is computer software, we do have people on staff. We have project managers on the site, and people that, in case one computer has an issue, you know, they'll go in, they'll address it. So I just visited one of our sites in Nebraska, and I think there was 17 people, local people in Kearney, Nebraska, that work at the site different times. And it's open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We have a security guard. I mean, so it does employ citizens.
And I appreciate that. I think we've narrowed it down to the abatement. So to me, that's pretty simple.
Sure.
Just before I start talking.
What is your name?
My name is David Wirt. I'm the professional engineer and signing engineer on Wolf Hollow Phase Zero Data Center. I'm nervous. Sorry, I'm just going to get that out of the way. Would you guys like to hear, you know, there's a couple pieces that have been brought up that have caused concern with the public here? If it's, and that's within the cryptocurrency aspect, if this is all about the abatement, I can go sit down happily.
I think it's about the abatement. I think, me personally, you know, this, this property is, has been separated out for, you know, a general public use. To be allowing something else to come onto that property without a change to that abatement is something that I'm objecting to. Not, not what you're doing there. I have absolutely no problem with, you know.
My intent in coming up was try to bring some clarification to the understanding of how this all works within cryptocurrencies. Most of what is said is pretty incorrect, just across the way everybody's understanding this, within what mining is, how trading works. There's a lot going on, and I would encourage you all to look into it a little bit more. But beyond that, you guys want to talk about the abatement, I'll respectfully go sit down. Thank you.
And I did want to address the lady's comment about maybe find a different site in Hood County. You know, we do respect land and farmland, agricultural land, you know, so we really thought this would be a great spot, since there's empty, you know, cement that's not used, rather than go across the street and try to use that farmland that could be better used for cattle, or, you know, maybe a solar farm, or, you know, something that would just be better. So we just thought this is a win-win for the county and for, you know, Exelon, and for Compute North, and for all the miners and all the data companies that we host.
Yeah, and to, and, and please don't get me wrong, I don't disagree with you at all. This, it may be a perfectly good use for that particular space. It's just the abatement on that space is the concern that I have for that.
Yes, and we, we would love to, you know, work on that, and I'm sure there's solutions for that, that we could figure out.
So is there any time constraint on this? And you're shaking your head, yes. What is the time constraint? I noticed that Mr. Mills has walked in. Vanessa, if, if y'all want to get your heads together so that y'all can share the blame.
Hey, Matt, come on down.
Yeah, come on down here. You just walked in. Let's, you know, one thing about Wolf Hollow, it was produced, it got an abatement in part also because it was producing energy. Now, this crypto mining uses a lot of energy. Am I correct on that?
Yes, but again, it's stranded energy.
Do you pay taxes on it?
It, it's excess energy. So again, you know, like-
Do you pay for that excess energy?
We'll be purchasing the energy. Yes. We buy the energy. They'd be selling it to us.
Okay.
And again, it would not be taking away energy from anybody or anything. It's, it's, you know, flared gas or whatever, it's a waste. Like, we should really be using that energy instead of wasting it. And if there is an energy emergency, like past February, we will shut down.
All right, is that in writing, Mr. Mills, that they will shut down if there's an emergency?
I can't read.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what we want. We want it in there, for sure. Okay. What's the time constraint?
30 days, we have to act on it. Either deny or approve, or conditionally approve from the day they submitted.
Say that again?
We have 30 days to act on it, either deny, approve, or conditionally approve.
Well, if we conditionally approve, that means we can look at it and study it, and then, I guess, is, am I correct in this? See, we've read it, and I haven't studied it.
I'm submitting.
Mr. Mills, we're still concerned about the abatement. That's what we're trying to get at.
Right, I, I agree.
Are these people, are the abatement that we have with Wolf Hollow, are they going to be separated out? Are they part of it? Is it interfering with the abatement we've already done with Wolf Hollow? That's our questions.
Right, I mean, I'm with you, you know. If you're giving Wolf Hollow for their project and their acreage, and then somebody kind of unrelated, or maybe it's symbiotic, but it's not the same thing that we gave the abatement to, just to kind of jump in and get the same abatement. I mean, I'm all for them doing it. I just don't know, we could potentially separate out and, and not do the abatement just for that one section, would be, I think, my, my thought. I'm trying to get, he said 30 days, and I said 30 days from when. And he said submittal, and I said, when was that? So, okay, so the 21st, so?
We don't have another court for the 21st.
What do we got? Can you still get it on for the Friday theoretically, or would that be too soon?
Let's see, 72 hours, you're talking about for the?
It's not going to give us time to answer the question.
It won't work. It's not on Friday, so it's too late. Okay, well, I mean, you could, I mean, my thought would be to approve it, conditionally approve it with the caveat that there's not the abatement, and then they're treated like anybody else, right?
Can we go in and separate that portion out?
Well, I mean, that's the tricky part, you know.
Okay, what's, what about going the other way on this? What about denying it and then just resubmitting it and giving us time to come up with these answers? What would, what, what's out if, if we deny this right now? What's, what's lost?
On grounds of having to deny it, would be if it was against the abatement.
Well, it's, I mean, yeah, I, that'd be, that'd be an option, I think.
How about, I mean, this is not within the spirit of the abatement.
Right, I agree.
So could we deny it and then go in and see if that portion can be separated out of the abatement? And, you know, again, please don't get me wrong, I'm not saying no to the project. It's the circumstances surrounding the abated property that...
Yeah, could I ask, what, what's magic about 30 days? What is that, where did that come from?
They added it to the legislation in 2019.
I'm sorry?
They added it to the legislation in 2019, the magical time clock to act on development applications.
What about an extension of that?
They could ask for a continuance, but-
Continuance, yeah.
Boy, you could also have a special meeting in theory in a week or so.
Yeah.
That's another option.
Is that sufficient time for you and Vanessa to come up with an airtight position for this county?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry we're slow. I had the TCUQ thing and some other stuff going on, so that'd be fine with me, sure, absolutely.
Well, it seems like to me that a conditional acceptance and then having another meeting gets us out of it, because we're just conditionally accepting it, subject to finding out what the, what the rights of the county are under the abatement situation.
Right, that, so in other words, just do a conditional approval and then just put it on the next regular agenda?
That would work. Do you, do y'all see anything, you attorneys?
I mean, that, you could say conditionally approve based on, go ahead, Clint.
Me and you won't be here on the next regular agenda.
Vanessa will be.
Why not?
She'll be in district.
Oh, well, we can bounce back and forth. I mean, conditional approval based on formulating a way to continue Wolf Hollow's abatement, but without an abatement for the new project, right? That's what y'all are trying to gear towards anyway, right?
Well, without it adversely affecting the county's right to, you know, that abatement runs out so that we can start collecting the full value of that property. That's what we abated, and I think the reason for it is that it was also good for the county, but it was also generating electricity. So that's what we want to make sure of, is that it doesn't mess up the abatement period in any way.
Well, I mean, I personally would want Wolf Hollow to stay untouched. They're part of it. I would just say, this new part, if you're going to carve that out, that doesn't get the same abatement that y'all got.
That's right.
Right. Yeah. I mean, you could do conditional based on us ironing out those details, and then they can either accept it or walk away. That would be my thought.
Okay, okay.
I'll make that motion. Okay. Good job.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all very much. We're going to adjourn out of the public hearing into, back into the Commissioners' Court. It is now 10:30. So we are back into the Commissioners' Court. And do I have any commissioner here that's willing to take a jab at making a conditional approval here?
Yeah, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve the site development plan for Wolf Hollow Phase Zero Data Center, subject to approval or by the county attorney on the effect of the Wolf Hollow abatement. Subject to this company not be included in the Wolf Hollow abatement.
And it not adversely affecting the county's tax base. Right. That's a pretty concern around, okay. All right, that's the motion. Do you have that down, Ms. Lang?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that motion regarding the Wolf Hollow Zero Data Center? I'll make the, I'll second it. So a motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton, seconded by County Judge Ron Massengill to have a conditional improvement of that, subject to the full statement as contained in the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Not for the project, for the procedure.
Okay, four to one. Four to one. Okay. Four to one. All right. What else do you have, Mr. Hitt?
Development would like to request permission to consult with staff and the primary engineer concerning a group of changes that need to be made to the development regulations to be more in line with the changes in legislation that were passed in the two thousand nineteen legislation I just spoke of, and to address some language concerning gross and net acreage to lots that would have served by well. And there's some changes that need to be considered to cover engineering review costs associated with development and the order of the final plat recording process. Development proposes getting a draft of everything that is needed to be adjusted with the help of the engineer and a few of those things. Then if the court would like, we'd meet, have a workshop and discuss these changes or the options, you know, if there's options, I can come meet individually if y'all want to have a workshop. If not, then if y'all didn't want to have a workshop, I'd just run it in the paper and bring it to court.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Your, you're bleeding that budget routinely, correct? You're talking about the, like the-
Talking about my engineering fees?
Yes.
Crazy.
Where you're having to go in and get things rechecked two and three times or whatever, and we're not charging additional fees on the adjustments, correct? So what are-
We're footing the bill for the engineering review by over eighty percent.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's-
You're thinking this is going to, a good thing for the county. It allows you to-
I don't think the county should be paying for the engineering review fees.
Is this a clear-cut thing where you can come up with a pretty simple plan to bring to us to vote yea or nay on? Or is this something that we need to have a workshop and get together and throw out?
I think so. If there's something questionable, then I'll, you know, I'll try to get y'all to have a workshop on it.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Y'all hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make a stab at it. I'll make the motion to allow Development to consult with primary engineer regarding procedures, revisions for final plats, and development fee schedule, including alternative measures to cover the engineering review fees associated with some developments.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to allow Development to consult with primary engineering, as stated in the rest of his motion, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hitt.
Aye.
About time. Bring them bunch next time, will you? Okay. Financial, Mrs. Becky Kidd.
I don't want to talk about cryptocurrency, okay?
Do not buy any cryptocurrency for the county. You agree with that, Mr. Eagle?
Well, Lynn, he does have an RFE out there for that, so we'll have to, we'll have to do something.
Line twenty million?
You've all been given advance copies of documentation regarding invoices to be paid in this court. You've also been giving, given a list of payments over ten thousand dollars. Expenditures for fiscal year 2021, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents. Fiscal year 22, two million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents. We have reviewed all these invoices and recommend payment.
Okay. Any further-
This town for some questions?
Yes.
So, I'm trying to be as diplomatic here as I can, which I don't do very well at sometimes. But I do have a procedural objection. If you go to, well, the first question I've got, if you look at the 2022 payments that you have listed, over ten thousand, you have Hood County, there's five entries there for American Rescue Act money.
Yes, sir.
And totaling one point one five million dollars.
Yes, sir.
And so, one, the first question I need to clarify is, is Hood County Committee, Committee on Aging Wheels, Meals on Wheels?
That's the senior center. Hood County Committee, Committee on Aging, that's a senior center. Yes, that's Meals on Wheels. Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up because that's not how our budget listed it. So just making sure I understand that. So, I think there's some confusion out there because I went back and watched the August 24th Commissioners' Court that we did initially on some of this proposed placeholders. And I'm confused at some of the things. I thought we were, you had mentioned something about some of this needs to get on 2021 budget. We had to get it done. When I get here to now, it's on 2022 budget. And again, I'm just trying to clarify because, again, if I, I'm going to call your attention to August 24th Commissioners' Court, starting at two hours, sixteen minutes, and fifty-five seconds. And I mentioned then that we've had no public hearings on this money. And to this date, we still had, not had any. And I'm not against the end results here necessarily. I'm more interested in having a public hearing and letting the taxpayers know and have input on where this money is going. That never happened. And I know the judge said that at that time, I asked, I said, well, who even, who decided who's, where all this money is going? And the judge told me it was me and Jay Webster and Becky Kidd. So again, I'm not saying that y'all, it's not okay. But I just feel like we need, one of the key notes, bullet points on the American Rescue Act is transparency. And it seems, and I'm not pointing fingers or anything, I just think we, I think before we do this, we need to let the public know more what's going on here because I certainly, I certainly think that we're lacking in some information. And one, the other thing is, I don't see where this budget that, that where they drew this money or where these figures came from was ever published. It wasn't published on the day that it was, that we voted on that, thinking that we were, nothing was, we were just voting on setting this money aside. The only thing that I've seen published is a budget that Mr. Webster came up with that was three hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and two cents short, that he later said, well, I've gone back in there and gone over the amount. Now, I've never seen that one. So I'm just pointing this out that, you know, I, I would like to have some more clarification on this myself.
Well, Commissioner Eagle?
Let me, let me respond to that very quickly. On the August 24th Commissioners' Court, I went back and looked at the minutes and what the agenda stated about this particular item was voted on and the minutes were signed. Can you pull those minutes up right there about it? Because it was put on the agenda and it was voted and then it was passed and you signed the minutes, approving, approving what we voted on.
Yes, sir. I, I went back and Commissioner Eagle and I reviewed it together. The minutes that I wrote, when I reviewed it on my audio, I went by what you said. You said that the, we have a first and a second, and then you all voted and approved it. But further reviewing it, there was a motion made by Commissioner Cotton that, that said, I, you know, what's the word? I'm looking for the term. You don't actually state the motion. You just say, I'll make a motion on that. And then there was no second. And then when you went into discussion and then you came back and you said there was a motion made by Mr. Cotton and a second by Commissioner Wilson. Well, there really wasn't. So, but you did vote on it.
Yeah, we did vote on it and it, and it has five zero, didn't it?
Yes, but it wasn't a correct motion.
No, it was four one.
Yeah.
Believe it or not.
Yeah.
Okay. But read what the five deals are. And as I understand it, we're getting up to where we have to pay the money. But let's see who the five people are that we voted on that was passed four one to pay the money to and the amounts. What are the amounts? Who are they so that we can clear up any confusion?
First of all, I'd like to clarify something. When we did a budget for this, it was unanticipated revenue, and that's what we did in court. We accepted the money. That's what I brought to court. And this budget was given to me, Commissioner Eagle. I would like to have seen Ruth's place on here. And I've had a discussion with Jay about that. But Mission Granberry is on here for three hundred and fifty thousand. Texas EMS, Emergency Medical Services, three hundred thousand. Hood County Committee on Aging, which is a senior center, two hundred thousand. Paluxi River Children's Advocacy Center, two hundred thousand. And Pecan Valley Centers, one hundred thousand.
So again, it's not the end, it's not the intention or, it's, to me, we just didn't, in my opinion, we're straying from the American Rescue Plan guidelines. But I'm just making, I'm just throwing that out there. I know that, you know, I remember the other day that I went to a Commissioners' Court County Judge Conference and the lawyer helped, did this. And what he meant by that is three people up here make it happen. So I'm just pointing this out for the record that, to me, it's, it's unclear for the taxpayers because it's unclear to me.
Well, this money was brought up in court and the minutes reflect, and after thirty days, the minutes stand as written. So the minutes were, I don't know when Ms. Lang signed them, but that was August the 24th. And here we are now on November the 8th, is that right? Nine, November the 9th. And so the minutes stand corrected. And we voted on this. And nobody can deny these five places need to get this money. And we've had this money. And what is the total of these five checks for these five-
One point-
Public charities? All of them are 501(c)(3)'s, aren't they?
One million, one hundred and fifty thousand.
How much?
One million, one hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand. And that is part of the six million that we initially got, that like three billion has already been paid, I think, for the sheriff's radios.
Not, not quite that much, not yet.
Two million, something like that. So we still have money left over for the first tranche of money that we received, that Hood County received from the American Rescue Plan. And then there's another tranche of money that's due, I don't know, it's in January, I believe. Is that-
I believe so.
In January, for another about six million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, these charities here, I think, they really need this money. And it was discussed here in open court. And everybody knows where the money is coming from. The money came from American Rescue Plan and these are the charities that are getting it. It's not going to any individual or any individual businesses that you could talk about. These are charities right here that really need the money right now. I was talking to Jeanette of the Senior Citizens, and she can't even get food for the senior citizens that she's got up there. She can't, the supplies have brought down. She's really in a conundrum about how she's going to feed these people. I just think that we voted on it and it's, it passed. It doesn't, everybody knows what we voted on and it's clear from the record and the minutes have been approved. And I would like, I'll make the motion that I think that we should go ahead and pay the bills, including the five payments as stated from the American Rescue Plan to these five charities here in our community. That's my motion.
Okay.
I would like to say just, just one thing. I just had a question on the reporting because basically we're, we're assigning all the reporting requirements over to these individual charities, correct?
No, that falls on me.
It's still, it's still coming back to you. What, what assurances do we, that's a, that's a, that's a tough question and I'm sure.
That's what keeps me up at night.
You got until 2026 to spend the money, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure that they spend it in compliance with the ARPA guidelines. And that will be on, sir-
And all of them being 501(c)(3), charity corporations have got to file the appropriate papers with the IRS, which we will get copies of.
And they have been given guidelines.
Years. We're, they're not going to be stealing the money or misappropriating the money. They actually need more money. I wish we had more money to give to the senior citizens and to the children and everything else here in Hood County. There's no question they'd need it. No question we're going to get more money. So there will be an accounting made because each of these entities have got to keep track of that money for their own purposes of keeping their 501(c)(3) status. And we will get that. That's in part of the American Rescue Plan regulation.
They were given guidelines. Yes, sir. They were given guidelines.
They're within the guidelines. That's what they have to do, to answer your question, Commissioner. So again, we have a motion to approve the payments, including the five charities made by County Judge Massengill, seconded by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I got abstain on this one.
Okay. So, for, for paying all of the bills, one abstention by Commissioner Eagle.
Based on the procedure, only, only, not the end result.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Well, I didn't think we'd ever get to miscellaneous C here, but we are, so miscellaneous C. Item number one, take appropriate action to canvass the results of the November 2nd, 2021 General Constitutional Amendments election. Ms. Michelle Carew.
Good morning and thank you for having me here today. What I've given to you guys, and I have so much more I want to send to you via email, but all the reports were several hundred pages and I didn't feel that it was economic for me to make five copies. But I'll be happy to email you all the reports that I'll be giving over to Katie Lang to put into record. But what I did print for you guys is a cumulative report of the eight propositions that were on there for the state of Texas. Now, I was approached and asked as to why the entities were not on here. And the simple answer to that is that each entity is responsible for canvassing their own. So, as a Commissioners' Court, it's your responsibility to canvass these eight propositions. So I've provided for you a copy of the cumulative report. I don't know if you want to look it over, if you have any questions, but I'll be happy to answer them.
Anywhere from sixty to ninety percent?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You said every one of them passed, anywhere from sixty to ninety approximately.
Correct. In Hood County, yes.
Yeah.
And they passed statewide too, didn't they?
I believe so.
So fourteen and a half percent registered voters on an off election. What, would you consider that a decent turnout or low?
I think it's a very decent amount. It's nowhere close to low. I know a lot of the voters that came in, came in for some of the other races that were on there, not necessarily for the constitutional amendment elections. But we did have very busy days during early voting and on Election Day.
Thanks. That's sad too. Fourteen percent's a decent turnout, right?
For an off year.
Yeah.
It is. Considering that we had as many, a year ago, we had closer to eighty percent. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to go ahead and pass this over.
Yeah. There's no action to be taken on this. You're just giving us a report, correct?
We have to make an action to accept the-
Oh, that we have to take this?
I did, I did provide you two forms up there for you to sign.
The second one's no action.
Correct.
What are the overvotes?
An overvote is, it only happens during a mail-in ballot. And that's a, like if it says vote for one or none, and they vote for everybody or more than one. So like, I'm not sure which one you're looking at. Oh, so you're looking like prop number-
Prop two and prop three both on overvote.
Right. So they voted for for and against. And you can only vote for either or. But they voted for both.
Okay.
So overvotes can only happen on a paper ballot. So it couldn't happen during early or on Election Day.
All right.
I passed them over to, I gave them to Jack and he was putting them over for you.
All right. Here it is. This is, okay. So here's the, let me read this.
Sure.
I, Ron Massengill, Hood- I, Ron Massengill, Hood County Judge, met with the Hood County Commissioner's Court Setting as the Canvassing Board to canvass the November 2nd, 2021 general election on November the 9th at the Hood County Justice Center located in Grandberry, Texas. I certify that the figures on the tally sheets correspond with the figures on the return. Witnessed my hand this 9th day of November 2021. Was anybody, and, uh, let me go ahead and read now the summary of the precinct returns. So I, the undersigned, the presiding officer of the canvassing authority for the constitutional amendment election held on the 2nd day of November 2021, Hood County, Texas, do certify that the following is the total of all votes received by each candidate and votes received for and against each measure as shown by the precinct returns. I further certify that the following vote totals include early voting by precinct received under Section 87.1231 of the Texan Election Code. So Proposition Number 1, for was 5,659, against was 878. So it passed. That was a total vote of 6,537. Proposition 2, for, 3,880, against, 2,593. The total was 6,473. Proposition 3, 5,404, against, 1,534, for a total vote of 6,538. Proposition 4, for the proposition, 3,810, against, 2,450, for a total of 6,260. Proposition 5, 300, 3,000, excuse me, 3,848, for, 2,374, against, for a total of 6,222. Proposition 6, 5,811, for, 622, against, for a total of 6,433. Proposition 7, 5,931, for, 536, against, for a total of 6,467. Proposition 8, 5,957, for, 484, against, for a total of 6,441. Is that your correct figures?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Carew? Okay. And it's dated, it's 9th day of November 2021. I guess we need a motion to allow me to accept these election and precinct returns. Do I hear this motion?
I'll make that motion, Judge, to accept the results as you stated.
Okay. Motion is paid by Commissioner Eagle to accept the precinct return results, as I read into the record, second by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now I am signing this document, and I'm assuming you have to file this someplace, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll have both of these up here. You have one more item, I think.
Yes.
Okay. What else do you have for us, Ms. Carew?
On item number two, I was just wanting to give an update regarding the November 2nd election and the Elections Administrator Department.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to start by talking about the actual November 2nd election. As you saw, we did have 14.5% turnout, which was, you know, okay for an off-year election. We did see a huge amount of voters come in and vote. They were really excited to be there. We've had, we had to add additional workers and additional machines during early voting to help accommodate the voters that were in line. Now typically, the busiest days of early voting are typically the first and last day of early voting, and we did experience a, a long line on the very last day, but luckily, things did go smoothly. Now, I do know that everyone is aware that we had an issue with our voting equipment in the middle of early voting, and we took care of it. After that, everything ran accordingly. I also received questions from the local voters who came by and asked questions, like, Michelle, when machines went down, how are you going to count votes? And the simple answer was, our scanners are programmed to where they can accept a regular ballot, such as the ones we passed out when the machines went down, and, you know, like pen and paper ballot, and the electronic print. So that was all taken into the scan. We didn't have any extra procedure that we had to do to take care of that, and every vote was counted for those who did check in. Now, since we are in a new voting system that does allow the voter to see their ballot before they put it into the scanner, we did have some voters walk off with their ballots. So those ballots did not count. We tried to stop as many as we possibly could, but unfortunately, we didn't get everybody. So we at least had five ballots that are not accounted for at the end. And that's just strictly, the voter must have assumed that it was a receipt, and they walked off and took it with them. So unfortunately, we don't know who they are, but we do know that we have five votes that did not count in this election. I would strongly suggest in the future, moving forward, that when a poll site is in place, that there is always a clerk at the scanner, which is located close to the exit, so that you can find and move traffic to the scanner and help catch those who possibly might be walking out the door. Luckily, we did have poll watchers in place that were able to catch several of them before they were able to leave. So that was really great for everyone that was involved in that. Now, on Election Day, things went relatively well. We were not anticipating, or I was not anticipating, the number of voters who were going to vote on Election Day and sent four machines to each one of our vote centers. Now unfortunately, the office is not adequately staffed during election time, and I did have one particular precinct that was calling requesting more machines, but I didn't have the manpower, number one, to get the machines to them, because I couldn't leave. Unfortunately, my assistant was, had called in that day, because she had some personal issues with her children that she needed to take care of. So I know that if you guys hear any type of complaints about the November 2nd election, it had to do with the fact that there was not enough machines at one of our vote centers, and unfortunately, there was not a way that I could break away in the middle of Election Day to take them more. So, I mean, that was a great lesson learned, and I know that they'll move forward with it. I did receive an email yesterday from another poll watcher who was put in place. She submitted a report to us of things that she saw, and some really great suggestions. I'll be happy to pass that along to you guys.
Is that, do you have that with you?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have it, but I'll be happy to forward the email to you.
All right. Okay. Okay.
Did you guys have any questions about the election, or any concerns, comments?
Is any member of the public, is anybody sent to speak on that? Number 2. Yeah. Mr. Peters, were you to, were you wanting to speak on that?
Yeah, when she stopped.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think that's, no, wait a minute. Then we got Mr. Granik then, too. We've got two speakers on this. Okay. All right. Okay. Do you have anything else you want to say, Ms. Carew?
I do, but I was, I didn't know if you wanted to do the election part first, and then talk about the department next, after the speakers?
Are y'all speaking on the election part, or, well, why don't you go ahead and finish with your side?
Okay. Okay. So I wanted to also let you guys know that I've been working with the IT department. We are moving forwards with some new legislation that was put into place for counties over 100,000 in population, which we're not there, but as that has been the theme of the day, the growth of Hood County is happening, and it's happening really fast. So I spoke with Drew, and we, and Owen, and the crew of them, and they've come in, and they're going to be installing cameras into our central counting station, and into the room that we use for central count, that will be a surveillance, that will allow voters to log in at any time, to look at the actual central counting procedures. Anywhere that a ballot is stored, a camera must be present. So they'll be installing cameras, which will allow the voters, at any time, they could place a link on the Hood County website, click on it, and voters can watch the entire thing from beginning to end. And I believe it has to start 20 days before an election. I'd have to go back and read it, but I, I believe that's what I read today. So that's a really great positive thing for the voters of Hood County. I think it will bring back a lot of the confidence that is missing, and that has been taken away. So I feel that once that's in place, the voters can go in, they can click, they can see everything, the ins and the outs of the everyday procedure of elections. And for those who really are unaware of what goes on during Election Day, I'd like to encourage people to come in and volunteer, ask to be a poll watcher, come in and see what we go through, because it's, it's not like we're just sitting there playing cards and eating chips. I mean, like, we're working all day long. So I think it's a great thing for voters of Hood County to get more involved and actually see for themselves how things are happening. And so I typed up some things I wanted to read to you guys, because this is my last Commissioner's Court, and I think it's very important. So today I stand here, and I'm angry. I'm angry that the politically motivated harassment that I've received in this position has pushed me to the point where I'm choosing to leave a job that I was excited to be in. The happiness I felt of being so close to home and my family while working in a profession that I love was solified significantly by political partisanship that has never been a part of this position in the time that I've been in the election world until now. But beyond that, I'm angry that this is a part of a larger issue that's spreading across the country. It's not just me. What I've been through while troubling, while troubling for sure is nothing compared to what has gone on across the country. And this troubling issue, as it seeks to control how elections are run, just to benefit a radically politically partisan group that is ultimately damaging to the democracy that made America great long before any of us were ever born. So, as I wrap up my time here as your Elections Administrator, I want you to know that I've grown to love this community. I love the sights, the sounds, and the people that make up Hood County, because this is my home. And I want the best for it and for a bright future. And because of that, I cannot walk away from being involved in the community I'm a part of, and now a part of, the fabric of my life. So today, I'm announcing my decision to continue serving our people, to serve them in a way that creates positive change for all of the community, and to change how people perceive local government. I am announcing my intention to run for county clerk in 2022, and I look forward to doing this for the people and for the betterment of all, not just the select few. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Peters.
That's a hard act to follow, but I'm going to try and pull it off. We'll see how it works. I want to focus on a couple of things that Ms. Carew talked about, specifically not just happening here across the nation, and saying to fight here, because I feel that. I deal with it every time I go out. I deal with the scowls when I wear a Bernie hat, the muttered comments. You know, there's a guy earlier wearing a Let's Go Brandon shirt. God love you, man. More power to you. Freedom of speech. Do what you want. Driving people out of the county isn't one of those things. And it's not just happening here. It's happening across the country. Armed groups are storming, you know, election centers. I mean, it's insane. It's total insanity, and to live through it is surreal, and I think a lot of people feel that way. But there are going to be those of us who stick around and fight. There are, there are going to be those of us who stay in places like this, who will not flee, who will not move to more liberal places, who will not move to Austin. We're going to stay here, and we're going to fight. I've been fighting here for years now. It has been years. I was raised here. I went to part of college while, while I was here. My family is here. There are a lot of us who are going to fight and continue to fight. I considered a run against you, Commissioner Eagle, specifically because of this, as a protest campaign, because there's no way a socialist will win 100 votes in this county. And I don't have any, you know, intention of representing that as being anything more than that. But as a protest campaign, I can talk about a lot of things. I can talk about white nationalism. I can talk about homophobia. I can talk about a lot of horrible things that go on in this county that have driven the people from here. And I can do that every day as my job. That's unpleasant, and it's not going to win me any friends, but I'm not looking for friends, and this is far more important than social, you know, than civility. I don't go to the bars around here. I don't go to the churches around here. I do shop around here, and I do work around here. But I don't care if people, as I've said before, I don't care if people hate me, because it's far, far, far more important to actually fight for the things that matter, to actually fight for freedom. And that means fighting for elections administrators. It means the, fighting for the independence of an elections administration office, and that it is not handed to a blatantly, nakedly partisan actor or group. It means fighting for librarians, not because they're my friends, but because those are, those are the stewards of freedom in this, in any community. And it's insane. It is absolutely insane that the people who cry the loudest about freedom go after the objects of freedom, the very pillars of freedom in any society. I don't know, man. I don't, I don't know what we're going to say to this, this, you know, the slate of people who apply to be elections administrators. I really hope they're not some crazy people, because I got to be really honest with you folks. Those are the kind of people who are going to want to come here, crazy people, who think that Hugo Chavez infected voting machines and flip votes. I actually have a mild, and I mean extremely mild, level of sympathy who doubt these elections, even though they're wrong, and I know it in my bones. Because as I've said before, I watched an election be stolen in my lifetime. I think I've watched a couple of elections be stolen in my lifetime, and it didn't work out for me. It didn't work out for my team. But storming elections centers and terrorizing elections officials across the country is not going to restore freedom. It isn't 1776. It isn't even 1860. It's a lot closer, I think. But I don't know, man. I don't know what else I can say. I've been doing this up here dozens of times. I, I can, I can bring protests, which I have refused, I have not done so far, for the safety of people, because there are people in this community who want to murder gays, who want to murder socialists, who want to murder black people and Jews. But maybe I bring some people here, and we protest. We do a real protest downtown that gets national attention and holds it for days. We'll see.
Okay. Next, we have Dr. Merrill Granik.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I just mostly want to take the time to thank our Election Administrator, Michelle Carew. She came just before the November 2020 election, which didn't give her much time, and that election ran very smoothly. There have been several special elections since then that have run smoothly in the interim of just a little more than a year. She's introduced new machines that satisfied what voters were, seemed very happy with, that they had paper ballots that they could read and then submit. As an election judge and as citizen, I'm very appreciative of how it, the election ran. I'm an old codger, so adverse to changes, but the machines were very well accepted. We went back to, we had like one provisional vote was, where a gentleman, his wife got a new driver's license. She was, accepted the, his license, new license, didn't get transferred. We had no problems with the voting, and so we now have a new system that people are happy with. And I think we should all, uh, thank Michelle for that. I had new machines, a new co-election judge, and everything ran smoothly, and we can thank the Election Administrator for that. And y'all get credit for that effort. So thank you.
That concludes that remark. But now, item number three. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the request to appoint Scott Haynes to the Board of Directors of the Hood County Development District, Precinct 3.
Yes, sir. The, I had a request from the Hood County Development District 1 to appoint Scott to the Board of, on that, Scott Haynes to the Board of Directors for the, for that Hood County Development District 1. They operate in the Acton area primarily, and you would add development to the Acton area and improve the area there, and also run the nature center.
Okay. Is Mr. Haynes here today, or?
No, he is not.
Okay.
I, I got a comment.
Yeah. Open it for comments or discussion.
So this agenda, it gave me an opportunity to see what, what this was all about. It's interesting that, that a- It's interesting that, that a County Development District is, this is kind of like an E S D. It's a, it's an entity that gets voted in as a subdivision of the state and kind of becomes its own little world or little entity. It has taxing authority. It can issue bonds. It's, it's basically a subdivision of the state. And the only question I've got, and I've tried to call them, Commissioner Wilson, and according to their website, they got seven board members. According to their bylaws, they've got seven. And this is just a question, I'm not against this, by the way, but according to the statute, they're supposed to have five directors. So that's the only question I've got. Why do they, why do they have seven instead of five? And I tried to call them, and I haven't received a call back, but otherwise, that's my only, I'm just pointing this out. I'm not objecting to anything.
I'm not aware of, you know, that. I will look into that, and I will, you know, we'll find out, you know, their reasoning for that. Okay.
Any other discussion or comment? Okay. Do I hear a second to Commissioner Wilson's motion?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Wilson to appoint Scott Haynes to the Board. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
By the way, the statute is Local Government Code 383.001 at seek, for the record.
All right. The next item. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a change to purchase orders, P O 35617 dated May 20th, 2021, and purchase order 36672 dated August the 12th, 2021, for the purchase of two new vehicles from a Chevy Silverado to a Ford F-150 Crew Cab. The contract price is the same. This change is due to Chevrolet not being able to supply the contract vehicles until 2023. And we've got two upstanding members right here, Commissioner Constable Jordan and Constable Ellis. How are you doing, Mr. Ellis?
I'm doing good. How are you doing?
Okay. Please, gentlemen.
In the packet, what I've supplied you, I sent you a copy of the email that General Motors has cut all production of fleet trucks until 2023 due to their chip shortage. They see no other way that they're going to fulfill this. They cut 500 vehicles from a state order roughly, starting with DPS, Parks and Wildlife, Tax dot, and we were included in that. So the vehicles that we had approved and we were ordering were no longer available to the county, and our only other option of a truck that can be done is a Ford F-150 Crew Cab, and we're asking for that change. And the only other change in that is that making all three of them the same with a difference in the original quote on mine for two, 452948, which would bring those two to 11604856, and all three of them would cost the county a total of 17407284. That is the vehicle being ordered, delivered, and all equipment being put on it before it's received by Hood County. It's ready to go when it gets here.
Constable Ellis?
I'm asking for the exact same, the exact same number that I asked for the first time.
Isn't that a shame? Whoever would've thunk it that Chevrolet would stop production of trucks?
They're not stopping production of trucks, what they said in the email is they're going to, you know, focus on delivering to those consumers.
Retail.
Retail. Right. Unbelievable. Okay. Do I hear appropriate motion?
Yes, I so moved that we approve the changing of the two purchase orders listed, P O 35617 dated 5/20/21 and P O 36672 dated 8/12/2021 for the purchase of, you know, Ford F-150 Crew Cabs.
Second.
Same price.
Good. Motion's been made by Commissioner Wilson to change from Chevrolet Silverados to Ford F-150 Crew Cabs for the same price, and that is second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Constables. Thank you. Okay. This brings us to item five. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize justice of the peace precinct number two, Judge Castillo's office to use Annex Two unused office spaces for record storage. Judge Castillo.
How are you doing, Judge and Commissioners? Yes, basically what I'm asking for is that my unused office spaces are there. My storage is in Acton, so whenever we have to go get anything or do anything, I have to drive all the way to Acton to get my storage. And the only time it was done that because at the time, that was the only available space that was available for us to put my storage room. I share it now with Judge Gwynn. This will make it easier for me. Also, Cotton's asking that there's some several other rooms that are, be able to use, both of us be able to use that.
Make sure you clarify that that's Cotton Howe.
Cotton. Yes, Cotton.
You know, I'm not using that number.
Judge Howe. So that'll free up the space over there in Acton because I know there's more built offices being used out there now. If they could want some storage room up there, it could be used that way. You know, so it'd be beneficial for all of us, for me, for Cotton, be able to use those offices for storage.
Yeah, they're not being used, and it just makes sense. He's, I see him out there all the time. What are you doing out here? Well, my storage is out here. Well, we've got storage space in Annex Two that we're not using, so. And Jay Rowdy said he could make it secure, whatever you need to do.
Right, whatever we need at that point, yes.
Secure the building, so.
We both looked at it, and not very much that we have to do if we do anything. So, yes.
And for the record, I want, our experienced maintenance supervisor back there's giving me the thumbs up, said that he can do it. So if he says he can do it, he can do it. So, thank you, Mr. Riley. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I will make the motion to authorize the justice of the peace precinct two and also precinct one, it's not here, but including Judge Howe, to move to office, to use office space in Annex Two for the unused offices for record storage.
I'll second it.
Got a tie here. Everybody wants you to use that record space. So, got a motion being made by Commissioner Cotton for you to be able to use the unused office storage space in Annex Two, second by both Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Give the good news to Judge Howe. Okay. Item number six. Consider and take appropriate action to pay the repair invoice to Longstar Emergency Group for repairs to Rescue 71 from Fund 55. The invoice totals $48,289.52. Bar Marshal Jeff Young.
Judge, Commissioners, this is a truck that's been out of service since August 17th. They had a pump failure. The truck initially was purchased to cover their area while their truck was being refurbished. While they were driving the truck to the shop to have the pump repaired, the driveshaft came apart, so they had to repair that as well. The $48,289.52 to fix this truck would be over half of my annual maintenance budget. So in talking to Becky, we found the best way to, for me to present this is to ask for a Fund 55 purchase to pay for this, or it would be 68.3 Bitcoins, whatever that is.
No Bitcoins here in the county so far. Okay. All right. All right. So you do recommend that's the way to do it. Ms. Kidd, you approve this if you think that's what we should do. Got to have a fire truck. She's giving me that stare for those of you that can't see her eyes.
Stink eye. That's a stink eye, isn't it?
That's, that's the stink eye. She doesn't, she's holding on to the money till the last resort, but we do have to have a fire truck 71, do we not, ma'am?
I'm not happy about this.
I can see that.
I've beat Jeff several times over this. He's not, he's fully recovered, apparently. But I'm gonna watch this real close. This is a lot of money. This is not normal, standard expenditures that we take care of. We have given them a great deal more money this year, and we're trying to make them more accountable, so I'm just going to keep an eye on it, and I'm hoping that we don't encounter any other expenditures of this type during the year because Capitol Projects, we need to take care of some county things with it, too. So I will agree to it, but that's what I know.
Okay. You can tell that Becky's from Wharton County, which is the same county that I'm from. She skins that buffalo on that nickel twice before she lets go of it, so.
Well, and that's actually a good thing.
Yeah. And you've been there, you've taken the brunt of this. Okay. Any further discussion on this act of God of the truck falling to pieces here that we got to have a fire truck for that area, though? Do I hear appropriate motion, please?
Judge, I'll make the motion to pay for the repairs to Rescue 71.
Second. All right. Motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the repair invoice to Longstar Emergency Group, an amount of $48,289.52, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and throw my pound of flesh on the grill now. I do have another truck from Toller that's, we're in the process of replacing a tank on it, and it's, it's not gonna be cheap either. So it, we'll be having, I'll be donating my pound of flesh, obviously, but Becky and I'll have that discussion when it's time. I don't have invoices on that one yet, so.
You see that stink eye that she's giving you again here, but
Yes, sir.
There's nothing we can do. I guess we could have a big fish fry.
I've grown accustomed to it.
Well, in that one, we got a, well.
Okay. All right.
Is this separate than the one we were dealing with?
Thank you for bringing up.
No, it's the same one we were dealing with in the summer. It's just, it's not back yet.
Okay. Would you please be seated, Far Chief?
Yes, sir.
Before we incur any further wrath here, okay? Item number seven. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the 2021 Equitable Sharing Asset Forfeiture Program Report, ESAC. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, this is done every year for the federal government. We've never gotten any money from them, but we have to keep this form updated and turn in all this information. So I just ask that you approve this report that we do every year to keep on their good list.
Okay. That's what do. Any further discussion or questions? Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the 2021 Equitable Sharing Asset Forfeiture Program Report.
Second. By Commissioner Cotton to approve the 2021 Equitable Sharing Asset Forfeiture Program Report, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize payment and accept the quote from Dana Safety Supply for the updated equipment regarding the patrol vehicles. Sheriff Deeds again.
Judge, Commissioners, we had ordered parts that took a long, long time for the last cars that we just got in. So I'm starting this off ahead of time to see if we can get this stuff ordered, just because we've already been told it's gonna take months to get this stuff in. I haven't got any notification like Constables did that we wouldn't be able to get the vehicles that we asked to order, and we got the POs in and got it in the works. So for those new vehicles that we placed the order a couple of months ago, then this is the parts and pieces that we need to put them all together. Light bars, pushbars, the light bars that we had on the other cars, they're out of warranty, and we're starting to have more problems with them, so we just need to replace those and get some new ones. So that's all part of this order. They are on the buy board, contract of 603-20. I must have left the other part of this back in my deal back there, but I think it's $33,000, $33,156. Normally in the past, the money has been taken out of Fund 55. When I talked to Becky and Jay about the money in Fund 83, I believe it is, that, that money's available, too. So whatever the court, whatever direction the court wants to go, I'd just like to get this stuff on order since it'll take many months for us to get it in.
Fund 83, please.
So Fund 83 is what I'd recommend it comes out of, and the auditor does, too.
Is that that $6,883.50? Is that the one you're talking about?
Well, that and the other, there's two. $26,272.50 plus the one you just mentioned. So it's $33,156 total.
Do I hear appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the purchases for the updated equipment for the patrol vehicles in the amount not to exceed $33,156 out of Fund 83.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nine. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the purchase of seven new desk chairs for the Hood County Adult Probation Department from the Capitol Projects Fund, cost not to exceed $2,000. Ms. Becky Kidd.
Judge, Commissioner Shelley's in court and asked me to take this one for her. We are supposed to supply a building and various equipment for adult probation. I don't see any problem with this. It's a very small number, and I ask that you accept this and approve this amount so she can get some chairs.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Is that a Fund 55?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion in the purchase of seven new desk chairs for the Hood County Adult Probation Department from the Capitol Projects Fund, cost not to exceed $2,000.
Second. Do I hear a second to that motion? Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the purchase of the seven new desk chairs as stated in the motion, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Item number 10. Discuss and take appropriate action to execute the lease agreement for the property located at 1322 Biloxi Road, Granbury, Texas.
Judge, can I suggest that we might go into executive session on this one here? I think some of the things we want to talk about.
Okay. Yes. All right. Motion, we're gonna go into executive session at 11:29 a.m. to take and discuss a property lease agreement. Okay, we're back into Commissioners' Court here at 10 minutes to 12. I'd like to remind everybody, we have Congressman Roger Williams that's gonna be at the historic courthouse at noon speaking to everybody, so this is the first opportunity to see him. I sure wanted to do that, but let's go ahead. The next item is 10. Discuss and take appropriate action to execute the lease agreement for the property located at 1322 Biloxi Road, Granbury, Texas.
Need a motion?
Yes, I do.
To execute who wrote the lease?
Yes, to execute the lease.
I'll make the motion to execute the lease agreement as returned back to us, signed and ready to go.
Right.
On 1322 Biloxi Road.
Made by Commissioner Eagle to go ahead and sign the lease agreement for the property at 1322 Biloxi Road. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. Item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding homeowners performing maintenance on the aerobic septic system of their primary residence. Okay. We've got a number of citizens that would like to speak on this topic, and the first one is Steve Biggers.
So I established earlier that TAC and Health and Safety, they basically say live and let live. When you look at the TCEQ website, it says, what rules govern this? Same ones, the TAC rules, the Health and Safety, 367. Same ones, the TAC rules, the Health and Safety 367 and 285. So, what that does, as I said, it gets the option to go into a local governing authority, which is you guys. It is you five guys here. You have the local governing authority. This, this thing came about 20-plus years ago, early to late 90s, and so the Hood order then came down where you had to have a maintenance provider, and there was a lot of questionable things back then when you look at the record, Commissioner that was in the, in the same business of, of septic business, family members that were in maintenance business. So, there was very questionable things, and he never did recuse himself when the conversations came up, because the Hood, the Hood County citizens have not been happy with this over the years. And so, so what, what I propose, or when you look at the, when you look at, once again, at the TCEQ and what they say our current order states, how it states, is our current order, 2014, adopted 2014, written by James McCoslin and adopted then, so it says on C, ongoing maintenance and on, for onsite sewage facility, property owner shall contact with a licensed maintenance provider or hold a maintenance provider license. When you look at TCEQ and what that means, to, to hold a license as a maintenance provider, holding a current license is a Class II water or hold a Class C higher wastewater or successfully completed three years of registered maintenance provider, successfully completed the TCEQ basic maintenance provider, successfully TCEQ approved advanced aerobic system, passed a licensing exam, be bonded, have insurance, pay an application fee, have background checks. This is what our current order says. That's for somebody that wants to hang out a shingle, like our current providers are doing. The homeowner should not have to do that. Homeowners take the responsibility and the liability of maintaining their own system, and there just has to be enforcement on like everything else in this county. I'm sure our fine sheriff can say that we have DUI laws, but there's people that drink and drive in this county all the time. There's speeding laws, and I see them radaring up and down Highway 51 where I live all the time. There are gonna be constant people that break the rules. So, it lays at your all's feet what can be done here. So, you, you have to ask yourself, these myths that we hear, that homeowners start doing this, if we take this regulation away, and trust me, nobody's asking to take this regulation totally away. I've been doing it for three years. I got my training, I maintain my system, I send my forms into, to the Environmental Department, they accept them, and everything is fine at my property. And there are other people in this county that can do that. There's people that can wire their houses, they don't need a license. They plumb their houses, they build their houses. You can install your system, but it still says you have to have a maintenance provider. So, you hear how things are just gonna go crazy and be swamp filled county. We have the rules now. People aren't gonna do it, aren't gonna do it, period. So, and the other thing is, you hear that, oh, it's good for the lake, and it is. I absolutely agree with that. That's why I'm saying it shouldn't go away totally. If people want to get trained, and trust me, when, with a quick search, you can find all kinds of homeowner training. TEACs, homeowner training, Texas Engineering A&amp;M class. Texas AgriLife, which is what I took. That's an online and in-person class. TOA, TOA has a homeowner class that you can do online or in person. National Association of Wastewater Solutions Technicians, online, in person. NARRA, National Association Wastewater Recycling. All these classes can be taken. Texas Rule Water Association, they all have classes for homeowners, water quality sources. There's, there's a group called Environmental Training Systems that comes in the county and trains homeowners. So, all these are, are classes that homeowners can take, they submit that proof to the, to the local agency, and they continue reporting, and they self-provide, pretty much like what I've been doing. Being responsible homeowners, yes. So, I want to leave you with this quote from John Adams, because it says exactly what I think. Government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, and prosperity and happiness of people, not for the profit or the honor of private interest, providers, or any one-man family or class of men. Search your souls. Do you have the right, as an elected official, to segregate out some homeowners and say, you have to pay this fee, period? It's not right. Thanks.
The next speaker is.
Head.
All right, Judge. I'll be the fir-
Especially the red across the moon. First thing I do is I look and see why we had that red, and can we do something to make it better? So, at the house, on my smartphone.
Mike, is it on?
At the house, on my smartphone, over the weekend, I looked into this, required no open records request. Every bit of this information I found on the TCEQ website and on the BRA website, and I compiled this little report that explains why, and I know from growing up here that it all started with a tragic incident with a little kid swimming in the lake here. In 1993, a cooperative study between Texas Water Commission and BRA and the Hood County Unit, Health Unit, first identified the increase in fecal coliform levels in the lake. The onsite wastewater treatment units at Lake Granbury and possible, and the possible impact upon the water quality of Lake Study identified the most notable concerns to be in the coves. In 1995, a study titled Survey of Conditions and Impact of Septic Tank Pollution on the Water Quality in Lake Granbury indicated that the soils in septic tanks are installed around Lake Granbury, are generally not well-suited for septic tanks and absorption fields. Another finding, there was almost all onsite systems around the lake, including absorption fields, did not provide adequate capacity that would comply with the current state criteria. The combination of previous studies indicated concern for water quality from onsite sewage systems and forecasts show the Hood County population would likely increase from its current level of about 42,000 persons to over 78,000 persons by the year 2030. It's 2021, and we're almost at that now. With this information in mind, the development of a feasibility study to bring a regional sewer plant to Hood County and eliminate onsite sewage facilities was completed in 2000. The Hood County Regional Sewer System Feasibility Study was a cooperative effort between the BRA and the Hood County Intergovernor Coalition. The estimated capital cost for this regional wastewater facility was estimated to be approximately $149,900,000, with an annual operation and maintenance cost estimated at approximately That's in $2,000. There was studies by the Brazos River Authority that detected combination of fecal coliform bacteria in several areas of the lake, primarily in coves with poor water circulation. As a result, BRA worked with the TCEQ and a consortium of local entities and federal and state agencies to implement an integrated watershed protection plan designed to reduce bacterial contamination. The project was funded by the EPA under CWA Section 319. There was a substantial portion of the developed area around Lake Granbury, which lies wholly within Hood County, is unincorporated in subdivisions that do not have sewage collection systems and centralized sewage treatment facilities. There was an estimated 9,000 septic tanks located around Lake Granbury in 2000, or 95, with absorption fields installed on small lots in close proximity to the lake at the time the study was done. Beneath these systems were installed before 1997 onsite sewage facilities rule changes. The 1997 rule changes required a soil and site evaluation to determine the site capacity to treat wastewater. An onsite wastewater treatment system was then selected based on the ability to effectively treat the wastewater. New development in areas without centralized collection and treatment facilities rely on individual onsite wastewater treatment systems for their wastewater infrastructure. In June of 1999, the state legislature gave Hood County the Texas Local Government Code Subchapter K 231.221 Development Regulations in Hood County. This allowed the county to regulate all development to protect the lake. The Hood County Development Regulations were created following the passing of this legislation. Beginning in May of 2001, the BRA began collecting water quality samples on a monthly basis at over 50 cove locations. Some of the locations showed no elevated concentrations of E. coli and were later discontinued. Some locations were added after a year of monitoring, and new information was acquired on possible source locations. The data generated from this effort indicates that many of the canals on Lake Granbury are impacted by E. coli issues and indicate a concern for public health and contact recreation. The data also indicates that the water quality in the coves is most influenced by surrounding land use rather than the main body of the lake. In 2008, the Texas Water Quality Inventory in the 303D list, which is also known as the blacklist, reported that Lake Granbury did not meet the water quality standards for E. coli, but yet has since met standards. Since the declining water quality in Grand Bay, Lake Granbury had begun to negatively affect the use of the lake. Lake Granbury is the livelihood, lifeblood of Hood County, with the majority of the county's communities relying on the lake for drinking water, irrigation, industry, and recreation. The economy in Hood County is closely tied to Lake Granbury, and the environmental condition of the lake is crucial to the county residents. A special workshop of brainstorming potential best management practices, or BMPs, in the lake watershed was held in February 2009 by the Lake Granbury Watershed Protection BMP Work Group. The technical evaluation provided information on factors including cost, effectiveness that led to stakeholder priority recommendations. These recommendations, called best measure practices, should be effective practical means of preventing and reducing bacteria and contaminating water bodies. It was determined that septic system malfunctions was a major potential source of bacteria within the coves of Lake Granbury, and by maintaining septic systems regularly and repairing problems as they were discovered, the likelihood of a malfunction and contamination to receiving waters was less likely. Routine maintenance was also extended to longevity of the septic system, reducing the costly repair or replacements. The stakeholders decided inspection and service records could be tracked and reported, particularly in areas with holding tanks required frequent pumpouts. This may be weekly pumping, pumpouts for full-time residents or requirement permit holders. To maintain and annually submit pumpout records would promote compliance with existing regulations. The workshop of stakeholders noted a most significant constraint for this measure would be the limited staff for the local health department to perform routine inspections on all the systems within the watershed. The stakeholders, which consisted of the EPA, the TCEQ, the Brazos River Authority, and Hood County, went through a very expensive feasibility study for the sewer plant. The costs were astronomical, high, and they explored alternative measures. The BRA led the effort to develop the Lake Granbury Watershed Protection Plan to reduce bacteria levels in the lake and its canals. It was accepted by the EPA in 2011. The Watershed Protection Plan was a community-driven plan that reflects local stakeholders' concerns, water quality data, stakeholder-selected management measures. The overall objective of the Water Protection Plan was to reduce bacterial contamination in the coves in order to ensure safe contact, recreation, use, and adopt a bacterial concentration goal. The total cost on one document that I found of the Lake Granbury Watershed Protection Plan was $531,865, and it was funded by a 60% federal match and a 40% local match. I've heard that total cost was much, much more than that. All the options that were considered and all the options that were accepted are listed on the Management Measures Evaluation PDF on the Brazos River Authority website. The compromise which is listed in the Lake Granbury Watershed Protection Act was to require onsite sewage facilities maintenance contracts. When old septic failed, they had to evaluate, be evaluated and replaced with the proper system based on the soil type and area of the land available. This compromise helped shape the Hood County Development Regulations, and that is why there is a water quality district, that recreational vehicle parks, multifamily homes that are not serviced by public water and sewer are prohibited in. It is also the reason why development regulations require one gross acre for any new lot that is platted, served by public water, but will have an onsite sewage facility. This regulation was originally set out to require a lot to be three acres to have an onsite sewage facility. Every bit of this information can be found and verified with an open records request, which I didn't need to have, on a home, or on a home computer or a smartphone. There was a lot of time and money spent on these, creating these regulations, orders, and plans, one, to make sure the lake, which is the center of the economy here, did not end up on the 303D list, and two, to save the taxpayers an astronomical amount of money that it would have taken for the countywide sewer plant, or to add staff to put the burden on the county to do every inspection for the private property owners, which will not be fair to those having to pay that are not needing any inspection because they are on centralized sewer or they qualified for a conventional septic system. In the development stage of this, there is documentation online that the Texas AgriLife Community Education for the systems that were, was tried, and the numbers continued to rise, and over the years, each time the numbers got worse, the course of action got more stringent. The requirement for the maintenance provider was put in place in 1998. Funding has, was spent to help HOAs amend restrictions to subdivisions, to revise regulations and orders. There was also an affidavit to the public that was created that is a restriction that runs with the land and the property that was used as a failsafe against the rule being undone, just to be done away with, since the county cannot change, alter, or circumvent restrictions. Thank you.
The next speaker on the West is Mitchell Coleman.
My name is Mitch Coleman. I have a maintenance company here in Granbury. I've been servicing Hood County for
Speaking to the
Sorry. Yeah, like. All right. My name is Mitch Coleman. I have a maintenance company, and I've been servicing Hood County for going on 19 years. I spoke to you guys several years ago, and we went through all this stuff again, so I just have a few things to say. Do you guys know how many onsite systems we have that are aerobic in this county? We're gonna hit probably 6,000 of them here by the end of the month. Okay, if we have 6,000 of these systems in here, which means we have 6,000 homeowners that have these systems, where is the outrage for this maintenance contract? Ain't none. So, I don't, I don't understand why we're going down this again. Hood County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. Needs more aerobic systems and smaller and smaller lots, because all the old lots and all these old subdivisions, the 50-by-hundreds, they're putting systems in there, and we're putting in drip systems. Granbury has been voted the best historical small town for many years in a row, and that's because of our lake, our downtown. There's Airbnbs popping up all over the lake in our count, in the community, and these people are not wanting to come visit these places and have to deal with somebody's stinking aerobic system. The majority of populations do not seek assistance until there's a backup, a pungent smell, or a call from the county, which what my company does is we bring to the county's attorneys if there's an issue. Once there's an odor in the system and the homeowner is calling, the system is in failure. The system at that point is pumping out raw sewage. With the COVID, fact, with COVID and all the other old diseases that are coming back across the border here, do we really want that in our community? Homeowners think they can add chlorine to these systems to kill the smell. Well, the smell cannot be killed by chlorine. The chlorine is there just for a safety on an operating system. I mean, and like, like I said here, most people can't even remember to change their filter on their HVAC, let alone remember to take care of these septic systems. And it, my concern is, with what's going on on our southern border, the diseases that are in the air right now, these systems can and will spread this if they're not properly maintained. And if the health department don't know that they're not properly maintained, they can't address it, so that's how I stand on this. Thank you.
Fred Benson. Fred Benson.
Yeah, he's not here. Okay. Harold Granick.
Gentlemen, I'll be brief. We live in a society, we live by rules, and things we do, if I want to work on my refrigerator, if I do a bad job, it's not gonna matter, I'll spoil my food, won't affect anyone else. If I decide I've gone on the YouTube and learned how to work on the brakes of my car and do a bad job, it may affect someone else and I may kill someone. I think the rules are I think the rules are to protect the society, and if someone decides that they can work on it because they've done a study, they can get licensed. I've spoken before about that I find it tiresome when individual laws are quoted without looking at the whole thing, but I think that it's a responsibility of the Commissioner's Court to govern the protection of the whole society. Thank you.
Is anybody else would like to speak on this?
Okay. In order to change the order, this order has been in effect since 1998. We've had a maintenance contract requirement, but under Section 17 of the Hood County Order, it states this order shall be in force, in full force and effect from and after its date of approval, and is required by law and upon the approval of TCEQ. In order to change the order or rescind it, Hood County is required by law to send the proposal to TCEQ.
That happens all the time in a lot of counties.
Okay. Yes.
Back there in the back asked to speak.
Oh, okay. Ma'am, do you want to come up here next, then you can speak afterwards?
Here on, here commissioners. I don't live around the, the lake. We do have an aerobic system. We would have chosen not to put that, I'm sorry? Diane Winterbore. We don't live around the lake. If we would have been able to build this house, we would have chosen not to put in the, the system. We lived in a different area where we weren't required to have this system. And when we lived in that area, we just had a regular septic system, and we didn't have a problem. If we did have a problem, we called someone. And this is no disrespect for, for Coleman. We, we use them, we love them, they're very, very good, very reliable, but we don't live around the lake, and this, this, we live out in the country. We have no water system around us. This is just, it's frustrating that we have to do, and I realize that there's a lot of people that don't maintain it, but there are several of us that, that would. The, the problem, we didn't even have a, a safety valve installed, and so that wasn't even, we didn't have the house inspected to know that there, there was something required. So, the person that built the house didn't, didn't put in what would have been required had it been inspected, and so we even had a backup, so we had to have a plumber come out. But if we have a problem, I'm gonna be the one calling. I'm not gonna just let my neighbors deal with the, the problem as well, I'm gonna be the one dealing with the problem. And so, I have a vested interest into maintaining my own system and to keeping it up going. So, it would be great if you would allow us to do the class and to take responsibility, just like we take responsibility for everything else on our house, and our car, and, and, and. So, thank you for your time.
A while ago, you had my profession... Relatives on the wall over, just right down the hall here, that fought for this country. I had a very dear friend that died, passed away last week. She was like another bond to me. Over the weekend, I did a lot of thinking when I was doing this. I don't really remember this guy that just bit his lip, because that was his job. I'm remembered for doing what was right, what I was raised to do. I want to address the attacking of these departments for standing up, I mean, for doing their job. We have regulations that we're paid to enforce. Spreading misinformation, when there's already an avenue that you have to maintain your own system, and no, you don't have to have those licenses unless you're going into business. You can go on the TOA website right now, and it'll tell you that the advanced, or the basic maintenance provider class is available for those, and it's the only recognized class to maintain your own system. We already have an avenue to maintain your own system. I pay extra for healthcare because those that can't pay, for those that don't want to pay, so now these, I'm gonna pay extra for taxes because we gotta put on more staff for those that don't want to pay for a maintenance provider, so we can, so the county can provide it? That's like socialism. I just wanted to give my two cents. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Mr. Head, I appreciate you carrying the water here, but it still doesn't negate the fact that this group of people that establish these are discriminating against people like myself, homeowners, that are handicappedable of doing these things. I'm not saying it go away. I'm saying if you want to have a provider, contract with him, follow the money. These providers are screaming and yelling because they don't want their contracts to go away. Coleman probably makes hundreds of thousands of dollars over the lifetime of this, not to mention the bad providers we have. I brought this to Jeannie's attention, that we had a provider out at the ranch that never showed up, but yet charged $375. There's bad providers, there's bad police officers, there's bad judges, there's bad commissioners. All these things happen, but to tell me I don't have a right to maintain my property and I have to spend that money a certain way is wrong, absolutely wrong. When, this, this summer session, when constitutional carry was starting to turn around and it looked like it was gonna pass, who were the biggest naysayers? Who were the ones that said it was gonna be old west out here, that licensed to carry people because it was taken out of their pocket? He's got a niche, that's good, he's trained. I had a niche in my photography business. I was trained, I kept ongoing training. But when people can do it and not be forced to, and you all have pretty much agreed at some point in time that big government is bad, little government's better, let me keep my money, then we should be able to do it. But follow the money, because that's where the screaming and yelling usually goes. Thanks. And I'm not changing. I don't want to be arrogant about this, but I'm not changing. I'm not complying anymore. I've done it for three years, you've taken my paperwork for three years, I am not changing.
I've got a question. When you said that there's more staff to maintain and check on people that would take the required course, is there only one required course? I know people saying that there's a bunch of courses. Is there only one required course that the state accepts? That's what I want to know. The TOA is the sole provider of the advanced maintenance provider course and the basic maintenance provider course in the state of Texas. Is that the only one?
Is, TOA is the only course recognized by TCEQ.
That's the maintenance providers that want to hang their shingle, not homeowners.
Homeowners also take the class where owners are allowed to do their own maintenance in counties or river authorities that require perpetual maintenance by a licensed maintenance provider.
But it doesn't say that's the only class, Judge. Teaks, the people that Jeannie sends her people to for onboarding education, Teaks has one, AgriLife has one, TOA has one. There's a lot of credible agencies out there that train people to do far more advanced things, must have their own one.
If you had individuals take the TOA class, or let some appellate court determine if there's any other required classes, when somebody said you would need more staff to maintain the inspections, what are we talking about that? What are we talking about if homeowners decided to maintain their own system? Would you have to have more staff to come out and inspect, or less staff?
Okay. When the ruling came out on the, and the EPA accepted this course in 2011, or the EPA accepted the Lake Granby Water Protection Plan, it was because of the E. coli, the hot list the lake had. When they accepted that, it states that maintenance contracts will be provided to the county. If the county, at that point in time, the commissioners were offered the opportunity to allow, when the 2011 course came up, or order came open, the commissioners were asked if they wanted to allow the public, the homeowner to maintain it. The commissioners chose to go a stiffer route because it showed you had a third-party independent individual. You weren't requiring the county to go inspect it, and you weren't requiring the homeowner to be the only one to inspect it. You required a third-party independent individual to inspect it. That was kept in place again in 2014. Hood County has roughly 6,000 aerobic units. They're not all spray application. Each one of them, a maintenance contract and reporting is required according to the watershed protection plan. In that instance, if we do away with the maintenance contract, then, in order to get Hood, the, a, a chance to TCEQ to show we're being stricter, each individual unit would need to be inspected by a representative from Hood County to ensure they're at least somewhere semi in compliance. So, that would add an additional 6,000 inspections to my department.
Let me ask you this. Do you inspect any systems now?
Yes, we have actually been...
Let me back up, let me back up. The systems that are sending in report to you, let's say Mr. Coleman, for instance, contracts with Mr. Biggers for a yearly quarterly inspection, or whatever's required, sends a letter or a document to you saying, "We've done this," correct?
Yes.
Do you go inspect those locations?
Yes. We have actually inspected to, October 31st, we have been out on 671 cases because there were issues with those systems.
But you don't, it's not a routine, if, if someone's contracted with to inspect, it's not a routine for you to go behind them?
No.
So, here, this, this is a, the law on this to me is not really clear, because if you look at the state statute 366-0515, it says that you may not condition a permit for an onsite sewage disposal system using aerobic treatment for a single-family residence on the system's owner contracting for the maintenance of the system. The argument where, that I'm hearing is that it's more stringent to make them contract with a maintenance contractor. But here's the second part of this, and I'm not passing one way or the other, Mr. Mills and I have been talking about this, and, you know, I'm, I'm just throwing this on the table. If you look at 366-0515, I just read A, G, it says the owner of a single-family residence shall, not may, it says shall maintain the system directly or through a maintenance contract. So, that's the state law right there. It says the owner shall maintain it directly, or he has the option of getting the maintenance contract. The argument that's being made here, I think, is that since, since we, the county passed a different ruling in 1998, I think you said, that, that that's a more stringent rule. And I guess that's the issue that I'm still kicking around in my head, because I'm not sure, is that, is forcing someone to contract with somebody outside, a private entity is, gives me some heartburn. But I guess the question is, is if they maintain their own systems, do you have a, if there's no contracting agency being forced on them, that's gonna mean you gotta go inspect all of them?
That can be a contingent on allowing us to relinquish this. If we try to go lesser, TCEQ has to accept it.
But as long as we get in the state standards, I don't see that being a problem.
The, that would be up to TCEQ. You would have to listen to, and you should have one of them, their representatives come speak, and it, explain how to change the rules if that's what this court so chooses.
Clear as mud.
And I would be 100% willing to do that, bring the TCEQ people in. I think that this is a base, this is a principled issue. I don't think that it's necessarily, do I? Okay, and, and, and I'm fine with that. Let's look into this. This is a, this is about nanny state government. We have people out here that are perfectly capable of doing this maintenance. If they see a problem, if something comes up wrong with their system, they can call somebody to come out and repair it. For them to be able to check this, I don't have to know the internal workings, or, or all the workings of an internal combustion engine or a trans, automatic transmission, but if I pull that dipstick out and it's got metal shavings in there, I've got a problem. I can take, I can either go tear that thing apart myself and try to fix it, or I can take it to a shop and have them do it for me. To require this, you know, it's kind of funny because you brought up the Obamacare, this is, this is kind of the same. The government's requiring somebody to have something, whether they need it or not. If you're 20 and in perfect health, why are we, and, and, and most of the people in this room would absolutely jump up and down and say the government's got no business forcing that on us. This is the same situation. If you're perfectly capable, and absolutely, I believe Mr. Biggers is, without a doubt, there would be a far greater impact on this lake with just household trash. We don't require, this county doesn't require you to have a trash service to come pick the trash up, yet if you drive down the road, there are a couple of places that people will take their trash out and throw it in the yard, but the vast majority of people don't want to live that way. The vast majority of people don't want to live with their aerobic system spewing sewage out, they're gonna address the situation and fix it.
The hard part about the regulations, you gotta plumb equally to everybody. You can't do it for one without doing it for everybody.
No, no, and I'm, and that's fine. No, no, no. My, my contention is, of course, we go through the TCEQ, we go through the, you know, Boski County has got theirs, theirs...
As far as the violation, he's admittedly already in violation, so what are we doing about that?
Well, with, with Boski County, and I, I don't know what to do about that, but they allow a program where, you know, it's, it's an a county-approved program. Is TOA the only, the only avenue for this? Does TOA, that class, does it teach you every type of aerobic septic system? The spray, the drip, all this stuff? It makes you sit through, if you don't have a drip system, why do you have to sit in a class and learn the drip mechanism? To, to maintain your system, it's a, it's a simple check. If you, you go down the list, you check the things, you make sure everything's functioning properly, you fill out a report, and you turn it into you. And much the same as we have the enforcement now, for one, I believe that if you give people, you empower people with that knowledge, they're gonna take better care of their systems. I don't believe that there's gonna be just this huge mad rush of people going and, and filling out this paperwork and not taking care of their systems and everything turning into, you know, it's kind of a doom and gloom situation, and I don't believe that that's the end result of this. Most people are gonna take care and not live in raw sewage in their yard. They're gonna take care of this thing and deal with it correctly. And if you still want a septic, make the reports required, and if somebody still wants to hire a, a provider, that's available too.
Well, here's something else, under 360, and I'm just looking at this black-letter law. If you look at 3, the 366.0515G, there is a enforcement mechanism in the, in the statute for people who have an aerobic system. See, you, no offense, but I mean, you mixed up, when you were reading all that material, you were talking about absorption fields, which is different...
I was just reading what I just improved some of...
Yeah, I know, I know. What I'm saying, though, is I noticed that, and, and as of 1998, I would say that more septic systems were absorption fields in those days. Is that a fair... Is that a fair statement, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay. So, which is when, because I agree, the absorption fields, we're talking about two different systems here.
I was just creating, I was reading of what I came to of why it was created.
Okay, thank you. So, but the first offense, if there's, if they go out and get inspected and they're in violation, they have 10 days to fix it or enter into a contract for a maintenance system. If they get a second violation within a three-year period, they have to go to a, a maintenance contract. So to me, that tells me that the, the state's giving the homeowner, the property owner, the benefit of the doubt, at least to start with. But then I'm hearing from Ms. Stacks that, well, you know, do we have a duty to go inspect everybody? And then, oh, do we have assurance that if you get an inspection contract, they get all the stuff done too? I mean, there's, to me, there's just a lot of, a lot of gray area here.
My opinion, you know, we keep talking about all these other counties, none of them other counties were mentioned in anything I read, when we're talking about Hood County. Those other counties aren't on this lake, we're on this lake. So forget those other counties, who cares what they do? I mean, that's just my opinion. But if we do away with this, are we going to do away with the restriction that's on my property that says I have to have one? I mean, are we going to be circumventing restrictions?
No, and I think that all that stuff is in the development regs. Of course, you're going to permit how the systems are put in, but this is a question of maintenance. This isn't-
When I bought my house, the title commitment showed, on the title commitment, there's a list of the exceptions on Schedule B, an affidavit to the public that requires a maintenance contract.
Why can't we change that? Why can't we go in and look at it?
The county can't change, alter, or circumvent restrictions.
Now, now, through the TCEQ, of course-
What?
A county can't change, alter, or circumvent restrictions. That's why we require a letter from the HLA when somebody replats where there's an HLA involved, and we require a note on a replat that says, "No restrictions have been altered or changed."
What does the restriction say exactly?
My restriction is, called an affidavit to the public, but it's a restriction that says I will maintain a maintenance contract.
Could that liberally be interpreted to, you will provide your own maintenance contract, that you'll still turn in the, the, the reports, the, you know?
At that point in time, was the existing county rule. That's why that was developed. They were just going under what the county said.
The T-
Development that way.
That was part-
You guys have the power to solicit TCEQ to say, "We just want to see the homeowner to get training, proof of training, follow the self-reporting, which is what I do. I am self-contracting with myself."
The last time the lake tested hot, they begged-
Mr. Mills, can a person contract with yourself? You should know that, that was, that was in Contract 101, wasn't it? You can't contract with yourself.
Sure, I could be the general contractor on my home. I can build my home and be the self-contractor.
That's not a contract with yourself, you're just acting as your general contractor, but you can't have a contract with yourself. Am I right?
That's right.
I'm self-providing, I, I'm self-providing, and I'm filling out forms, following the regulations, just like Mr. Coleman follows. That's what all we're asking to do, is basically let the homeowners follow the same template that providers follow now.
Okay.
But you haven't taken the crep class that's required by TCEQ.
TCEQ doesn't require any classes for the homeowner, period. I read the rules. TCEQ says homeowners live and let live.
That's not what Genie's saying.
That TCEQ-
The TCEQ recognized course is the TOA course.
Right, and the only one they recognize.
The what?
The only one they recognize to, to be a, to provide, get the license to do what we're requiring them to do.
Right. The TOA is the only one that has a maintenance tech, a maintenance provider license.
I'm not trying to argue that, I'm just telling, that's what they're telling us. They're telling us that you have to, you have to take the TOA class to qualify yourself to maintain your own septic system.
It's saying you have to take the TOA class to be a service provider.
Maintenance provider, yes. That second portion of what you just read, the judge said, a homeowner had to do it. That's what it says.
Now, is that a, is that a TCEQ regulation, or something in Hood County? A Hood County regulation?
That's in the basic class, the basic ones for the homeowner.
Right.
That's not true.
It, it, it says that, no, it says that you can take whatever the-
Mr. Mills, Mr. Mills, come here. Give me what you showed me, let Mr. Mills up here, he's a unbiased lawyer.
Okay, the EPA accepted Hood County requiring maintenance contracts as part of what we did the last time the lake tested hot. The next time the lake tests hot, because if we rescind these, then the EPA can tell Hood County what we will do.
Okay. Sir, you're allowed to speak now. Come on up.
It's afternoon now. Good afternoon, Judge.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Commissioner, I'm Roger Skip Russell, most of you know me. Uh, I work for Genie in Hood County Environmental Health. I just want to rebut something that Mr. Biggers said. I do most of the investigations for the maintenance providers. I've sent one on the court, and I got him convicted on three charges. I've got one right now that I did a case for six months, and I've sent that court, that provider to Sheriff Deed's office, and they're going to be looking for prison time for fraud. I've also written numerous notices of violations on maintenance providers. We can ask Mr. Coleman, I mean, Mr. Coleman's had some discussions about how things should be done. So when I hear people say that, "We're not doing our job online," or "Our palms are being greased," I take offense of it. Okay? Now, I don't really care if you have a maintenance provider or not. I've seen what happens when they don't take care of the system. I've seen the little child's footprints in the mud that's feces. I've seen it. I've got pictures of it, and I can show them to you. So, that's all I just want to say. Mr. Biggers most likely would take care of his system. I don't have a doubt one bit. But 99% of the people will not. And I'm seeing that my first in my own eyes. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, okay, did you read that? Don't you have to read the law in its entirety? You've got the four corners interpretation.
Well, I mean, I, I think as I understand, and we went through this two years ago, but according to the existing regulations, you have to hold a maintenance provider license. And to hold a maintenance provider license, you have to go through the TOA course. That's my understanding, right? So, I mean, I think there are other courses that could provide you the knowledge to do it successfully, which is, I think, Mr. Biggers' argument, but I don't think those, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but those don't give you the maintenance provider license according to TCEQ. And that's what's in our current regs. Now, y'all can change the regs, which is, I think, the more appropriate discussion.
Right.
You know, do we need to change the regs or not? I mean-
I'd like to hear from TCEQ if we did that. I would like to hear from TCEQ. If we changed those regs and loosened them, that's what you're saying, to back to the state, which is less stringent than ours, and we did that, TCEQ, what would you think of that? Would you approve it? Would you come and inspect our lake again? Uh, you know, I, I think we could be, we could hurt ourselves more than we help you if we bring TCEQ back in and test our lake, because we unrestricted stuff that the Walleye Water Quality District Committee put on. Those were stakeholders that, that helped develop those restrictions and said, "Hey, you need to maintain your systems with a qualified inspector to inspect them." If we took that off, I, I don't know what TCEQ would say. I'd like to hear from them.
Well, the, um-
This, this was filed to TCEQ in September of 13.
Right, okay, so, uh, I forgot where it was, but, um, they, there is a, a part about substantive changes needed to be approved by TCEQ. So I mean, what you could do, if you wish, is just redraft that one part and then send it to TCEQ and get approval. Now, there's a lot of different ways you could do it. You could say, well, you have to have a maintenance contract if you actually have a lakeside lot, and if you're not on the lake itself, you don't, or, I mean, there's all ti, all kinds of options you could consider there. Uh, or you could say, you know, you could have the maintenance licenses, or you could have this, or this, or this other class that Mr. Biggers has alluded to. You could make that a, a condition of doing your own maintenance providing. I mean, there's a lot of different things you could kind of middle ground, and then I'm, I mean, I would guess TCEQ would probably approve it, but I don't know.
I think those are all great ideas, you know, the, there's a lot of, to me, there's some gray area here. And if you get away from the lake about, I don't know, a mile, especially out in some of these rural areas, you've got more cows out there to worry about than septic systems. So from a practical standpoint, that's not a bad idea to have a certain parameter from the lake. There's other things that could be done to try to accommodate the homeowner that's prudent, besides the iron fist to government. Just my opinion.
The, what we would need to do in 13, in September of 13, the existing order we have now was sent to TCEQ. And then, the proposed order, which regulates on-site sewage facilities, and then in, TCEQ sent back that they would accept what we were proposing. In February 15th of 2014, it was published in the paper. February 25th, a hearing was held. So there is some timeframe happening because TCEQ then signed the letter and issued it February the 30th of 14. So this actually started in September of 13, changing the order, and it took until April of 14 to complete it. Now Boski County-
Seven months.
Boski Counties was, they adopted their order in-
I've got it here, I'd have to look through it to see.
But TCEQ did not approve it until mu, the end of May of '21. So it took them, what, nine months to approve it? So there is a timeframe, should we decide to do this.
Sure, and that's, you know, I'm, follow the procedure and do what we need to do, but I would like to see if we can make that, we're a homeowner, responsible homeowner.
I'll tell you one thing that really got me here, is that your Department of Environmental and Health already has seen 671 cases this year-
Yes.
-so far.
Yes.
And that's, and that's where a lot of people have maintenance contracts with other people. Now, if you turn it away, and most people can go ahead and take any course, and I'm kind of for the concept, too. I, I see where Mr. Biggers is coming from, that it's your property, I own property, I'd like to be able to do on my own property what I'd like to do. But then again, I see that we got a common good here, being next to the lake, and we lost a child. Wasn't it a young child that died from swimming in the lake? You can't have that. You know, so you've got a balancing that you have to do. One thing that I've heard from all of this is that the TCEQ has got to be involved in this. So we need to get with them before we change anything and get a law passed on here, because if you go six months or nine months with raw sewage out someplace like, Ricky, you just described, with children's footprints down there, if you do that, man, you could have a real calamity on yourself. Dr. Victoria Calder, you think she'd be talking about the water treatment plant, which is treated water, where this is raw sewage all around this lake? You really got a problem. You know, one thing about a maintenance provider, when you said you had a neutral third party, it's sort of like the deal when you have a citizen that's arrested by one of Sheriff Deed's deputies for speeding. Now, who is Judge Howe and the rest of the JP's going to believe? The citizen accused of speeding or the police officer that's just out there just doing his job? You think he's singling you out and just pulling you over and giving you a ticket? You've got your self-interest here at mind. So that's where you've got the element of fudging maybe a little bit. These are hard times for a lot of people, and maybe you see something and you let it go. Where if you have a maintenance contract, you just pick it up and call Mr. Coleman, and he's supposed to be out there. What's your turnaround, Mr. Coleman? If somebody calls you, has a maintenance contract with you, how soon do you send somebody out there to inspect it and correct it?
Normally, the same day.
Same day?
I call it tomorrow.
And see, so what you said is that you've seen it go on, that situation for it to be coming up and seeping on the property had had to be going on for months, right? For that much?
Yes, sir, and sometimes, and-
And when we get a, when we get a case, we have to go inspect it and go to the property, find out what the problem is. If it's a valid, valid case, we'll have to write either a notice of violation right then on the spot, if we can get ahold of the property owner. But most people work, so we don't, so we have to write a letter. Then we have to wait that that letter gets in, comes back to us, that's been received, a certified letter, and then we got to give them 30 days to get the system fixed. I've had systems that we couldn't get, um, the letter made to, so we'll go back out. If the letter comes back un-deliverable, you got to, excuse me, I'm cold, so I'm freak, I'm shaking here. So when, if the letter gets returned back to us, I have, we have to go back out to the property, hopefully we can make contact with the property owner. Chances are, it still hasn't been fixed. Sometimes they have been fixed. If it hasn't been fixed, we'll leave a door hanger on the, on the door, take a picture of it, date in time we've been there. Then we have to wait again, try to get some more. And a lot of times, it takes multiple times to go out and find the person that owns the property. Sometimes we have to use the constables. But we have to relinquish all of our avenues before we get to that point. Now, that's just one. That's just one case. We've had, like Genie said, we've had over 600 cases this year. There's three DRs. All right? We had, not only do we do subject, we also do the inspections of the newest, new systems installed. We also do vectors, which is trash, and that's another scary ball of wax, and any other kind of stuff that comes down a pike when it deals with environmental. So we're doing what we can to get, and we've, we've gotten neighborhoods cleaned up. We've gotten a lot of stuff taken care of, but it just takes time. And sometimes, time is not on our side. Indian Harbor, their marina had a septic leak, their main line broke, free-flowing sewage into the lake. We got TC, uh, we got, um, VRA involved, we went out there, we shut the marina down to get the system fixed. It's fixed now. Okay? So there, we, there are certain things we have to do, it just takes, takes time.
That's what the whole problem is about this thing. Here's what, that I think, and I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to get Mr. Biggers and the, and the environmental, and somebody down here from the TCEQ to look at all these rules, regulations up out there, and let us see what we can do. I'm all for you being able to take care of your system, that's going to be fine. The problem is, how are we going to have, and I want to address the manpower issue of 671 cases on top of all the other stuff that you've done on the deal, and see if y'all can come up with a solution, and maybe we need to rewrite the problem about everything, but give me an order that has the best interest of everybody in mind, and I'm willing to look at that. I, I think there's arguments all the way around here. I like the fact that if right now you've got a maintenance deal that runs with the land, this is really a complex legal question, because if you've got a, a restriction on your deed, you can't remove that. You go to a title company trying to sell your property, and you didn't have it or have it, you've got the EPA involved? You've got the title company that's not going to write you a title policy to sell your house. What we need to do is to come back here and try to get a solution to this problem. I would really like it, and it may work out better for everybody concerned, but you can't have open sewage out there and all these things going back and- open sewage out there and all these things going back and forth. I don't know. It may be something that, if they don't fix it right away, I don't like the idea that maybe they're stalling 30 to 60 days with raw sewage out there seeping around. That's hurting your neighbors and everybody else. That just sounds so unreasonable to me, that maybe you have to repair it, and then you do like attach a mechanic's lien or a material man's lien on the person's property to get it fixed. I don't know. I don't like that too much either. But I like the idea of being able to do on my property what I want to do on my property, and that's where I agree with you, Mr. Biggers. But then again, I see the common good and what they're trying to say about this lake here, and then I see a young boy dying. That's the last thing. Wouldn't it that happen, you say, '93?
It was around there.
God, that is, I mean, that's-
So, wait a minute. A septic system killed that boy?
Right.
Well, and I think that a lot of development regulations have gone into place since then to try to beat those situations on the front end, too.
They were spurred with all of the checks.
Sure, sure.
And at that point, the Commissioners Court, at that point, the Commissioners Court and all the Commissioners signed a letter and sent it to the BLA begging for help to keep the lake clean and to clean it up.
Oh, shit. Shut up. Do you have any statistics on that? The before and after stats?
Do what now?
You got any numbers on that to support that statement?
I have the document in my office.
I don't mean the document. I mean the statistics, the numbers, the-
Of what?
The before and after numbers.
The BODs. It's in the Lake Grandberry Water Protection Plan, sir.
No, I know that, but has, has it been verified that the law did what it's supposed to do? Or is it, is this anecdotal? That's what I'm trying, I'm trying to prove this up, and you're, you know, you're, you're making a temporal argument here, but what I want to see is the numbers before and the numbers after, where you go, and I could go, I see your point now. All I'm hearing is-
It's on, it's on the, like, the only documentation that I have is on the Lake Grandberry Water Protection Plan, and it shows it.
It shows before, what it was at, at that stage in time?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Out of, out of these reports that we've had, how many of them were homeowners versus rental people? Because I, I take a vested interest in my home. I, I do stuff on my home to improve it all the time. People have to do that. So, I'm curious about that. I'm curious about the fact that we know the sheriff can attest, I like to drink a beer. I'm not going to get behind the wheel of a car when I drink a beer. I'm just not going to do that. You, you say something about the sheriff or the, the police officer gets speeding, and who's he going to believe, and that kind of stuff? That's a paid county or city official. Then if, if you want to do inspections, then let these guys do inspections. But, but here's, to Mr. Eagle's point, I, I, once again, you'll laugh at this, but I self-contracted with myself three years ago. I filled out my contract. I'm going to maintenance provide on my property. I'm going to fill out the paperwork. You haven't had to come to my house. I have no problems at my house. I make sure my neighbors are aware that I do it, and if you see something that I miss, I'm on good standings with my neighbors. So, that's the way it works. There's going to be people who break every law in the book. We know that. They're going to do it. The ones that aren't going to do it, aren't going to do it, and it's job security for you. It absolutely is. But to penalize homeowners that are very conscientious and very handicapped able to do this, that's not right. That's not, that's you telling me how to spend my money, and it's wrong.
Well, sir, first of all, I've said it before, you would probably be 1 in 100 that would take care of it.
Let's take a gamble, though.
Okay. Now, but that's, well, that's true, but it's truthful, what I've, what I've seen out in the field. So, his question was to me, how many rental properties to actual landowners? I would say about a third.
Third what?
A third of the complaints we get are rentals.
Rentals.
Okay. So, there's a third of them.
There's a lot of it there. The people don't care. They just pay the rent, go on, right?
Now, to say another thing, a lot of the problems we have, and which is another ugly hair, head that's going to rare up here very shortly, is Airbnbs on the lake.
Please, let's stay on point. We've been here for an hour on this deal.
I understand that, but it's, but it's, it's tied together, because most of, a lot of the Airbnbs we've had complaints about with septic's.
That's commercial.
This is true, but it's-
Yeah, that's commercial. But it's not considered commercial here.
I'll make a motion that we table this activity until there's further consultation between the county attorney, TCEQ, environmental, to get, you know, the bottom line of what we're going to have to do to revise the regulations we have or enforce what's on the regulations now.
Second.
Good. The motion has been made to table the septic system, aerobic septic system problem until we have the environmental, the TCEQ, the county attorney, homeowners, to come together and give us some more information and come back with the, with hopefully, a solution that will be acceptable to all parties. All those in favor of that motion, that motion was made by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Meeting is adjourned.